All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to reconvene this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board. Can I have a motion to certify closed session, please?
Madam Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law. That only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner and Mr. Riffle.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Kavasos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Before I ask for a motion to approve our agenda, I just want to make a very brief comment. I just want to acknowledge the elephant in the room because I think sometimes it can be more stressful to not acknowledge it than to acknowledge it. And this is the first time the seven of us have been together since our last meeting, March 19th. It's no secret that there were a number of comments made that caused some somewhat unexpected turmoil, and that has weighed heavily on all seven of us, board members, as well as staff and members of our community. I am very hopeful that we will work through this, but it will be over time. And in the meantime, we absolutely cannot let any of that get in the way of the very important work that we are here to do. So I'm appealing to all of you publicly, as I did in private, to say all of your feelings, concerns, potential anxiety is valid, but I'm asking you, and I am also going to set that to the side so that we can focus on the agenda that's before us and the very important work that we must do. And we owe that to the over 11,300 children, to the 2,000-plus staff, and to all the members of our communities that have placed their trust in us. And so with that, can I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Kavasos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
And then we will turn it over to Dr. Heron for superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Williamsburg Symphony Orchestra recently gave an exclusive performance of Peter Boyer's Ellis Island, "The Dream of America," to all WJCC Schools' fifth-grade students. Williamsburg Symphony Orchestra music director Michael Butterman led an engaging performance of symphonic music paired with captivating performances by Colonial Williamsburg's Performing Arts Department. Together, these performances brought to life the story of immigrants forging their way to a better life of hope, family, and pursuit of freedom in America. I'd like to extend a special thank you to Carolyn Kuragian, Williamsburg Symphony's orchestra's president and CEO, whose efforts made this student experience possible. We are grateful for the special partnership WJCC Schools has with the symphony. And I had the joy of attending that performance, and it really was amazing. If you have considered a career in teaching, we want to meet with you. Join us and spread the word on Thursday, April 11th at 5:00 p.m. at James Blair Middle School. Come and join us and learn about ways prospective teachers can be hired to teach while they earn their credentials, and our exclusive full reimbursement incentive for teachers who participate in the I Teach program. This is an opportunity not to be missed. Thank you, Madam Chair. This concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. I think we have a couple of school board member reports. Mr. Riffle, do you want to go?
Yeah. Let's see. I attended the WHRO March 20th meeting with Dr. Heron. It was my first meeting as a member of that board. It's the Education Advisory Committee, and we did some introductions from some new members at that meeting. We also had a presentation from the Virginia Symphony, which was pretty cool. I have a couple of programs that are coming to the peninsula and things that families should look into. You can just go to virginiasymphony.org. It's pretty available to make that stuff happen. And then they did some business meeting type stuff, just talking about the movement of their chair and the election of their vice chair in the next meeting. They talked about some of their deficits and things that they are dealing with, expanded revenues, which is a pretty healthy board. People pay their dues. It's pretty nice. And then they ended that. It was a pretty quick meeting for the most part. We had lunch, and then they gave us a tour of the facility, which was the best part about being there. We got to see all the cool radio stations and stuff they have. We got to watch them produce the show, like WHRO's channel for the 5 o'clock segment to 7, which was pretty sweet. And you got to watch them throw Rough Rough Man into the 4:30 slot, and I was like, this is pretty sweet. And then the whole tour, they kind of showed us some of the resources they have for educators. I think I'd just like to point out to some, it's maybe the hidden gem of the WHRO secret, which is the emediavirginia.org, which is like an encyclopedia of all SOL curriculums. So it has lesson plans. It has a bunch of videos and things that I would just point to, some of the teachers or teachers who are looking for some way to jazz up the next section or the next half of this season, just looking at that because they think it's a great resource. And then they also shared there's a couple of things that we could bring to our division, like the STEM reading and reading bands and things like that. So it would be great to utilize more of the WHRO resources moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Mr. Hosang?
Thank you. I'm going to talk about the New Horizons meeting that I had, and it was mainly focused on the budget. But before I start, I want to touch or talk about the and recognize and commend Ms. Carol Robbs, who's in charge of the Culinary Arts Department there. I don't know if Dr. Kiefer will share my sentiments on this. I hope he does. But the culinary students prepared a meal for us, which was outstanding. It was a great theme. So it was a four-course meal that they prepared themselves, that they served, that they did everything. And I was very impressed, not just with the cooking and the food, which was outstanding, but the time that they took in to put into it and the preparation and them serving us. I mean, they did everything like it was a five-star restaurant. And so I just wanted to give my, recognize her and commend her for everything that she did with her students and the students for what they did. During that timeframe, they also recognized multiple students for placing in different competitions throughout the year. They probably had seven to 10 individuals who had placed, I think in the state and nationwide. So I just want to commend them for everything they did and for providing such a great meal for the trustees and for the superintendents before our meeting. Getting into the budget meeting that was the main thrust of our meeting, I just want to go through a few quick points on it. They went through a cost allocation of how they were assessing an increase or decrease for each of the districts or divisions that are partners. They basically, they had a division enrollment projection of the number of students that each division is going to have students there. They had a projection of enrollment average for the other divisions, and then that would average into what each division would be charged. They did an external revenue, getting money from the state, and operational cost increases just for New Horizons itself. Some of the things that they were looking at is they were doing a 3% raise or increase for all employees, salary increase, and they were absorbing a 6% increase in healthcare premiums. They had stated that this was the first year in several years that their healthcare had gone up, and they are trying to absorb that cost themselves and not put that on their employees. What it's going to boil it down to for Williamsburg James City County is it's going to be, again, this is just a guess, or it's not the true budget, it's just a proposed budget. They're looking at an 8.7% increase for Williamsburg James City County, which is an increase of $188,282. And that would put our amount that they would be looking at from Williamsburg James City County at $2,355,643 would be the budget that they're looking at from Williamsburg James City County. I just wanted to also quickly touch base with how our numbers are looking at this point for the Career and Technical Enrollment Program. Last year, we had 200 students enroll, or at least apply for the Career and Technical Enrollment Program. This year, it's up to 272 students that are applying. The issue that students are going to be facing with this is currently, or as of March 20th, they had through all the districts, 1,914 students have already applied for a total of 1,138 positions. So there's going to be approximately 800 students that may not be able to attend Career and Technical Enrollment Program. So right now, it looks like it's a favorable program. There's a lot of students that are applying for it, which is a great thing. In regards to the Governor's School for Science and Technology, we had 24 applicants last year, and we have 29 this year that have applied to attend the Governor's School. And the good news about that is currently, or again, as of March 20th, there were 143 students that have applied through all six districts, and they have a capacity of 180. So I don't know if they accept everyone who applies, but at least at this timeframe, they have the capability to accept those individuals who have applied. And they said the application process was still open, so there could be more people that have applied since then. But that's what New Horizons is looking at at this point.
Great, thank you, Mr. Hosang. Mrs. Hunley, you have a report?
Yes, the foundation met, and of course, the first thing they talked about was the feasibility study as far as what would their foundation look like if we were to split. And they had come to the agreement that they would do both. They would serve in both the city and county. They would still award grants. That was just a long discussion that we started out with. And then also, because they have given out the grants in February, they're in the process now of fundraising to get more money. So they're talking to their donors and trying to identify new donors so that they can start getting more funds so we can be able to give out grants next year. And as you know, the Teacher of the Year banquet is funded by the foundation, so school foundation, and that will be in May in CW at the museum. So we're looking forward to that. They have a newsletter. They have a quarterly newsletter, so that'll be coming out soon. And their website is now up and running, so you can go and see some of the teachers receiving their grants, and some of them talked about what the grant was for. So you can go on their site now. It's not under construction anymore.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. And that's something that anyone can go on and donate to, right? The WJCC Schools Foundation.
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. I don't think there were any more reports from this side. Nope. All right. Then we will move on to item 5.01, Design Progress Update on Value Engineering for Preschool Centers Project.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Dr. Kiefer is going to introduce our design progress update on value engineering and introduce our guests again this evening. Dr. Kiefer.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. As we ensure that the video is working and the Zoom is working, I got the thumbs up, so I think we can go forward. I did just want to mention that I was a member of the Clean Plate Club with Mr. Hosang at the dinner, so I can confirm that the meal was tasty. This evening, we come back to you. We were with you in March, and in March, we gave you a design update at about the 30% marker in terms of design for the pre-K spaces. We also told you at that time that we would come back in early April and walk you through the value engineering suggestions that came forward as a result of that program, and would share with you what those recommendations were, and then next steps from those recommendations to include what we hope is a more comprehensive timeline in terms of the project. Bailey Campagnion and Melissa Turnball from PPK are going to be with us this evening, sharing that information. At your places this evening, you should have received a three-page document which outlines the specific value engineering suggestions from the firm MBP. That's the firm that did the value engineering workshop with us. You should know that initially, there were 66 suggestions, and the MBP team took those 66 suggestions that they came up with and then whittled that down to 28 that they brought back to the initial architectural team of PPK and Blue Justice Upton. We will give you a quick flyover of the building design again, laying out the floor plan. Then we'll go through those 28 recommendations, and there are three categories for those recommendations. We are either accepting them, we are not accepting them, or we are continuing to look at those recommendations and make potential modifications to the design of the building. I do just want you to know, because this is something that I've learned during this process, that these proposals or recommendations in value engineering are broken into five categories. The category letters in the far-left-hand column of your printout this evening, so for instance, A stands for architectural, and S stands for structural, M is mechanical, E is electrical, and C is civil. As I was first going through the process, I got a little bit confused with the alphabet soup, and I thought if I could explain that to you, it might be helpful in terms of context. So at this point, I will turn it over to Bailey to walk us through those recommendations, and then before we get to the timeline, I'll make a couple additional comments. Bailey?
Thank you, Daniel. And thank you all again for letting us join you tonight. It's always a pleasure. We're going to run through quickly, as Daniel mentioned, just a brief overview of where we are with the project. As you know, this is a prototype pre-K building. We've selected two elementary schools for the building to live, Clare Ver Baker and Norwich Elementary. Brief overview again of the plan with the classroom blocks, the administration core, multipurpose room, and then the back-of-house space. And bringing these renderings back, the exterior elevations, just reminding the board about the aesthetics of the building and how we got here, what our goals are for this building. Multipurpose, basically. And then the good stuff, the value engineering exercises. As Daniel mentioned, these numbers along the left column, the letters A and S, this sheet is all architectural and structural. There are many recommendations. We went through them one by one. These recommendations were made on our 30% construction documents, so we are not fully through to 100%. So as we move forward in our construction documents, these recommendations that are under consideration, we could still incorporate into our documents. The first page, architectural and structural, we wanted to remember our guiding principles that we came up with during our design charrette very early on in this project as we were reviewing some of these recommendations. Some of them are changing the geometry of the building, maybe changing some roof lines that we don't necessarily like in the district. They're a little bit harder to maintain. Some of them are easy, raising the sills of all of our windows to 2'8". You know, the kiddos still have a view to the exterior, but we're kind of reducing some of that glazing. So as we went through this list, we tried to keep in mind our guiding principles, keep in mind that we want to be very good stewards of the dollars that we have, but also give these kiddos an amazing place to go to school and learn.
And Bailey is...
So that's architectural and structural.
Yeah, Bailey, hold on. Let me just point out A24. An A24 was the one classroom wing module as a bid alternate. And as we've shared with the board, and I think it's important for us to mention, while that's a relatively high dollar mark in terms of potential savings for the project, it would not help us in terms of capacity. And frankly, if we were to take a wing off of each of the buildings, we wouldn't even necessarily be able to serve the current number of students that are in the program right now. So while in the value engineering exercise, it was brought forward as a recommendation, we are not accepting that because we don't believe that's in the best interest of the project. Sorry, Bailey.
No, that's great. Please cut in. Moving on to the next page, this is M, E, and C, as Daniel mentioned, mechanical, electrical, and civil. These were a little bit easier to say yes and no to because as a district, you guys have standards for your systems, and we don't want to put something in that's brand-new that might require different things for your maintenance team to learn how to maintain. So this list is a little easier to run through and say, that's not in our best interest, or yes, we can accept this very easily. So then, Daniel, I don't know...
Sure.
...comments that you had after this list. Do you want me to switch the schedule, or do we want to hang out here?
Let's hang here for a second and see if there are specific questions on the Page 1 and Page 2 of the value engineering document before we get to Page 3.
Board members, are there any questions so far?
I have a general question, and is this just me? Maybe this should be understood. Who is accepting or not accepting these recommendations?
Administratively, as we're working with the architect, we would indicate acceptance or not acceptance. It's not necessarily a board parameter to accept or not accept. Our goal in this presentation tonight is to bring forward where we are in the design process. There will be an additional presentation to the board just before we get ready to get the construction bid out there, kind of a final design whereby we might share with you those items under consideration, what we've determined is in the best interest of the project, and then continue to move forward from there.
Okay. So on C2.0, the sidewalk that's under consideration, is that because we're not sure if the county pays for that or us, or is it, you just want grass there? I was just wondering.
Did you hear the question, Bailey? C2.0?
Yes. So currently, we have that sidewalk shown because we believe it is a requirement of the county to have the sidewalk. Should we submit our site plan? And we ask the question, can we remove this? And they say yes, then we will remove it.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else?
On those two pages, any other questions? We did, on the next page of the value engineering exercise, we did want to share with you some items that PPK and Blue Justice Upton, going back to Bailey's point about being strong stewards of taxpayer dollars, as they've continued to consider the design, are thinking about these items. And maybe Bailey can explain what these items are, and we wanted to give you an illustrative example of what that may look like. So Bailey, can you talk to us a little bit about this particular page as well?
Definitely. So some of the items on the VE lessons that you've already seen are just, one of them as an example was raise the window sills to 2'8". But we think if we take a look at our glazing a bit further and say, what if we remove 15% to 20% throughout the campus, what would that look like? What is the potential savings? Because you have two buildings, so all of these numbers are for two buildings. So taking chunks of scope and seeing where we can reduce without actually impacting the use of the space and the quality of the interiors and exteriors. So reducing glazing and then casework and millwork, you'll still have a lot of storage, but maybe we kind of cut back some where we can. And then equal quality but less expensive materials, like flooring, maybe we don't do rubber flooring, maybe we do a sheet vinyl or a plastic laminate countertop instead of a solid surface. It's still a very good quality material, it's just not quite as expensive.
Mrs. Hunley?
Yeah, I have a question about the windows, and I'm sure it's somewhere in there, but I know that they do have rest and naps. Will there be shades of some sort to come down so that there's not all that light coming in during nap time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Easy answer.
What else, Mr. Riffle?
I just want to go back to, I guess, A24. So it's around 5.2 million. This is the cost for two wings, I guess. It's not just one. Or does each wing cost that amount of money?
That would be the two wings. So any costs you see there has already been doubled by MBP.
Well, that's a pretty good deal for half a building.
Well, it's not half a building.
Well, it's a wing, so...
Right. It ends up being, I think, four classrooms, so in essence, we would not build four, not build eight classrooms.
So if I look at the presentation, it's like, what, the second page or third page? No, it's the one with like...
Look at the floor plan.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
We're talking about removing a whole bottom corner. Yeah.
Correct. And again, I think that part of our goal going into this initially was looking to be able to house in the neighborhood of 650 pre-K students across the two spaces. We understood from the beginning that funding for that would not be within the realm of possible, so we dialed that back to somewhere in the neighborhood of, I think our number right now is 550. It's 252 students, excuse me, it's five, just over 500 students that we're trying to accommodate, recognizing also that right now in our Bright Beginnings program, we are just under 400 students. With a waiting list, of course.
Thank you.
As we transition to the last slide, Ms. Ordigo, I did, from the very beginning, our goal with this project has been to put ourselves in a position to have two new pre-K spaces ready to go for August of '25. As we've gone through that process and looked at requirements from the Planning Commission and submissions to the Planning Commission team, we've run into some delays, not dissimilar to any building project that you may be familiar with yourself. That also happens when you're building larger buildings. And we wanted to share with you the current schedule and then two potential schedules, one that we're calling an anticipated schedule, and then the third would be a possible schedule. And our hope is genuinely that we are able to meet the anticipated schedule. I did want Bailey and/or Melissa to share a little bit about what some of the delays have looked like. And our understanding is that some of that is related to staffing at the planning department and the associated... associated challenges with, with going back and forth and trying to get things submitted. So Bailey or Melissa, could you shed some light on that and kind of walk us through how we hopefully could have this building ready to go as we hit January first, twenty twenty-six?
Sure. Yeah, so the submission deadlines for all of the board meetings are obviously very far in advance. Um, we have submitted drawings for both sites. Um, and then the comments back have, they've been feeding them to us as they get them. Um, but their deadlines are slightly moving past when the deadline is to submit originally. This is confusing. I'm very sorry. Um, bear with me. So as we get the comments, you know, we are working diligently with the county to return them and answer them, but those, the deadlines seem to be overlapping at this point. Um, so as we respond to comments, we are already past our deadline to submit for a board meeting. Um, and that all inevitably pushes us a month every time that happens. Um, so as we receive comments, we, we're doing our very best to answer them as quickly as possible and get them turned around. We've been meeting with the county, um, multiple email threads, just trying to keep the lines of communication as open as possible. Um, we do think as we continue to push forward and respond to their comments, you know, some of these dates are gonna become more concrete and we'll have better, better answers and better um, predictions on which board meeting we'll be able to make. Um, but as of right now, as Daniel said, yeah, this anticipated schedule is, is what we're tracking towards. And I'll pile on to that and just say, some of the comments that we've received, they've been very gracious to work with and, and um, but with that, some of the comments and some of the things that they've requested have been um, a lo- much longer process than simply answering questions. So, for example, a, an additional traffic impact analysis to look at different scenarios. With each one of those kind of comments, it requires, you know, releasing a new contract, getting more site observations, releasing a new report. And so, um, that has been, I would say, the reasoning for the shift or potential shift in schedule is some of these comments and some of their due diligence is taking a lot longer than we ever anticipated. So they've been great to work with, as Bailey had mentioned, but I would just say we, we want to be ahead of it, but we also want to be very transparent with everybody of what some of these delays um, could anticipate because this is the earliest learners, um, getting them into a school and in a settled environment in, you know, a, a normal sequence and schedule either at the year or semester. And so, um, again, our anticipated schedule is where we really, uh, think we will be. But we also wanted to pu- you know, put forward the possible schedule based on either decisions you all make or if anything else is to come up, um, that we haven't already heard or anticipated. We just want to be transparent in that process as well. So.
So if I could summarize what I heard was, there's a potential six month delay in the project because of the requirements of the planning commission.
Yes, but I think that's accurate. I think, I think they were, they just wanted to make sure there's, yes, that's absolutely correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask a question about that real quick? Um, so that means initially the goal was August twenty-five. Anticipated now is December twenty-five, but possibly a full year later. But if it was substantially complete December of twenty-five, would we open mid-year or would it be August twenty-six regardless?
Yeah, I think potentially we would try to open in January and move all the students, pre-K students to the new buildings and keep everyone else the same, and then redistrict everyone else to start the next year.
Correct. I think that would be, i- i- if we were, if we were in that position to have the pre-K spaces available to, in January of twenty-six, that would be the goal. Is to occupy those buildings, work with the pre-K students and teachers and staff to make, now, genuinely, mid-year transitions are, are complicated.
Yeah.
But we, I think, understand that the, the process itself of building in an occupied status is going to be complicated as well. So there are going to be some inherent administrative challenges both centrally and at the school level that we'll need to work through.
So we would never transition everyone mid-year. But because pre-Ks, we've been into a brand, two brand new spaces, that is physically possible. But we wouldn't redistrict mid-year, obviously.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hosein, I saw you have a.
What is the definition of sus- substantially complete?
With respect to the plans?
Yes, well, uh, uh, the schedule you have at the last.
Like the building substantially complete, the last one?
Yes.
Bailey?
So the, yeah, it, it essentially means the fire marshal has signed off for people to occupy the building. So.
And it can be used for its intended purpose. So it does not mean necessarily, I mean, although we hope, um, but it doesn't necessarily mean that there won't be additional touch-up paints, um, miscellaneous small items, but the technical definition of substantially complete is you can use it for its intended purpose. In this case, students can occupy the building in a safe manner, um, for its intended purpose of learning.
That answer your question? Mr. Riffle, did I see a hand? No? Okay. Any other questions from board members? No, I'm not seeing any.
Thank you very much. Appreciate Bailey and Melissa joining us. We will come back to the board again as we get further along in the design process, uh, as we are getting more and more excited about this coming to fruition.
Well, thank you very much for that update.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Thank you both.
Bye.
All right, um, we are now moving on to proposed agenda items. We'll start with six point zero one, review the special education annual plan for twenty-four, twenty-five and the title four B flow-through funds.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Brown will present this this morning. Annually, we bring this plan to the board for their approval. Um, Dr. Ryan, I'm gonna pass to you.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Heron. I'm also happy to, uh, have Ms. Maggie Matthews with me this evening. She's currently serving as the interim director of special education for Williamsburg James City County Schools. It is a pleasure to come before you tonight to review the proposed local special education annual plan. In board docs, you should have a draft copy of the plan and the part B flow-through application and report from the Virginia Department of Education. This presentation will provide a brief overview of the provisions contained within. The special education annual plan is a regulatory requirement under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act of two thousand and four. It serves as a formal agreement between the local school boards and the Virginia Department of Education regarding the provision of special education services and related services for students with disabilities. Each component of this plan must be approved in order to receive these federal funds. As required by the guidelines, this plan has been shared with members of the Special Education Advisory Committee on February eighth. The federal funds provided to local education agencies under this plan may only be used to pay for the cost of providing special education and related services to students with disabilities. In Williamsburg, James City County, these funds are used solely for special education personnel. There are two separate and distinct funding streams referred to as subgrants in the special education annual plan. Section six eleven is applicable to school-aged children with disabilities in grades K through twelve. Such, section six nineteen applies to preschool-aged students with disabilities. While there are different amounts allocated to each section, the total amount of these federal funds allocated to school divisions is formula-driven and takes in consideration historical federal funding, total school enrollment, and poverty level. At this time, new allocation amounts have not yet been released. In light of the fact that new allocation amounts have yet to be released for fiscal year twenty-five, the twenty-four, twenty-five special education annual plan is based on the amounts awarded in twenty-three, twenty-four. The amount is two million, five hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars. The amount allocated to section six eleven, which applies to school-aged children in grades K through twelve, is two million, four hundred, seventy-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars. As outlined in the application, section six eleven subgrant identifies special education personnel whose salary and benefits will be paid with these specific funds. Also in the application, in section six nineteen, you'll notice that the subgrant is smaller. This is just over thirty-four thousand dollars. It is used to cover a portion of a teacher's salary and serving preschool students in the Bright Beginnings program. As you have seen in your review of the application, there are various required components contained within. While the majority are fairly straightforward, I'll talk in greater detail about a few of the most substantial provisions in this application. In the application is the report of the implementation on the twenty-three, twenty-four annual plan. As you see, it is noted that all federal money allocated in this plan was utilized for the salaries and benefits of special education personnel. Historically, our division has used these funds for special education personnel, and that continues to be what is proposed in the twenty-four, twenty-five annual plan. This formal agreement ensures that the division adheres to the regulations governing special education programs established under I D E A. And the Department of Special Education and all W J C C staff play a role in ensuring that the following statement of assurances are implemented throughout the calendar year. The next noteworthy provision is the maintenance of effort information, which can be found on the application. This federal regulation requires divisions to budget in each subsequent year at least the same amount that is actually spent for the education of students with disabilities in the most recent and preceding fiscal year. It includes costs above and beyond those required to provide regu- regular education programs for non-disabled students. There are four tests to determine if the vision is compliant. This includes either local dollars, local plus state dollars, local per capita amount of dollars, or local plus state per capita amount of dollars. The amounts here are the projections based on the division's twenty-four, twenty-five preliminary budget and were provided from our finance department. A quick comparison of the M O E calculations from the last confirmed reporting fiscal year show an increase in all four categories. Based on the projected amount for twenty-four, twenty-five, our numbers suggest that they will meet the means test in all four categories by spending more in the subsequent year. The federal child fine regulations require local school divisions to identify, locate, evaluate, and provide services to children who reside in our locality and are need of special education and related services. That obligation also extends to children who attend private schools and are homeschooled within the geographic boundary of our locality. The proportionate set aside requirement, which is addressed in the application, states that the local education agency must spend a proportioned amount of federal funds on providing special education and related services to parentally placed private school and homeschool children with disabilities. There are seventy-one students who have been identified as having disabilities and were parentally placed in private schools or homeschooled. Accordingly, as noted in this section, the set aside funds are used to cover a portion of the salaries and benefits of speech-language pathologists who provide these services to these students. The proportionate set aside amount is a part of the total section six eleven subgrant allocation. As noted during our budget workshop presentations, this graph shows the five-year history of our special education expenditures and the funding source. The light green area of each column represents the amount of federal funding, which is approximately ten percent. The dark blue represents the amount of state funding, which is approximately twenty percent, and the purple represents the amount of local funding, excuse me, each year, which is approximately seventy percent. For fiscal year twenty-four, the amount, or for twenty-three, excuse me, the amount of state and federal funding was seven point nine million and the amount of local funding was sixteen point nine million. Following your approval, this application will be submitted to the Virginia Department of Education by the due date of March tenth. We can expect to receive preliminary award amounts by July, and the final award amounts are typically released by October. Once approved, this plan takes effect July one and runs for twenty-seven months. And at this time, I'm able, able, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Board members, are there any questions? Mr. Riffle?
Yeah, I think that, looking at that graph, we, the seventy percent from local, um, is this something that's limited by the L C I? Like, what funding mechanism are, are we talking about that kind of gets us to the point where, you know, we're spending more than you know, our neighbors on this stuff, right?
I think it's, it's mandated by a few things. It's, it's the amount of special education assistance that are required. It's the type of services. If we have students like in and out of division placement according to their I Ps, um, we have to account for that tuition cost as well. So it just depends. Um, I think what we encounter as we continue to see an increase in student enrollment, and specifically students with disabilities, is what we agree upon as a federal obligation, and no matter the, the services agreed upon, we, we have to provide funding for that.
Sure. I guess it's not really, I guess, what would be helpful as we move forward into like, maybe the next biennium, as we advocate as a locality to like, get better support from the other partners?
I'd say really it's more the state and federal level, if we could continue to advocate. And we had a great discussion at, uh, C I C on February about the need to go out and advocate for additional funding at the state and, and federal level.
Thank you. Anything else? I have a, a question if there are no other board members. Um, you mentioned at the beginning that there were, um, you don't have new funding allocations yet. When is that anticipated and is that, is typical to not have it yet?
It, it's typical to not have that. Uh, it's typically late May.
Okay.
Um, and what we usually do is once we receive the actual award amounts, we'll share that with the board once we receive that information.
And is there, you know, a typical delta increase or?
So compared to last year, we had an increase of two hundred and forty thousand total in six eleven. Um, based on our numbers, I would s- see a slight increase in that. But in terms of the graph, we're gonna see the same type of distribution of funds across the different localities, or the different levels.
All right. I think that's it.
Well, I'm sure just one, one comment, as, as Mr. Riffle's pointed out, this is a huge area of advocacy in terms of funding. Uh, growing needs, growing enrollment of special education students and no additional or, or extremely a, a small amount of additional funding from the federal and state level. So this is, this is a huge place to, to put some of our emphasis next year.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Thank you, Dr. Brown. All right, now we will, um, review the local plan and budget for career and technical education.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Ms. Walters here this evening to take us through this plan. This, again, this is an annual presentation to the board um, about this, uh, this grant. Thank you, Ms. Walter.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Heron, and members of the board. Uh, thank you for having me here tonight. I'd also like to share that our C T coordinator, Melissa Che, is joining us this evening as well. Um, and before we get started, I'm apologizing ahead of time. The pollen is winning. I'm gonna try to limit any coughing that might be happening at the, tonight. The Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Act focuses on improving the academic and technical achievement of C T E students and strengthening the connections between secondary and post-secondary education. Perkins affords states and local communities the opportunity to implement a vision for C T E that uniquely supports the range of educational needs of students, exploration through career preparation, and balances those student needs with the current and emerging needs of the economy. Each year, we are required to develop and implement a local plan for C T E in order to be eligible for funding. This plan has been reviewed and approved by members of our Career Ready Advisory Committee, and I will be presenting the plan to you this evening, which is broken up into sections referred to as schedules. There are a total of eighteen schedules in addition to the annual performance assessments in the Perkins Local Plan. In alignment with our strategic plan, Elevate Beyond Excellence, Perkins Five Plan supports academic achievement and college and career readiness, educational equity and access for all students, and communication and engagement of a variety of stakeholders. The Career Ready Advisory Committee is made up of representatives from each of the stakeholder groups listed on this slide. In addition to school staff and school board representation, the advisory committee, which meets throughout the year, has been involved in the development, implementation, and evaluation of W J C C's C T E programs. We would like to thank all members of this committee for their dedication to C T E and for reviewing, providing input, and approving this year's local plan at the meeting held on March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. Their participation in this committee provides invaluable insight and a wealth of knowledge and resources for which we are truly grateful. A list of specific members of the Career Ready Advisory Committee is listed on schedules one and two of our local plan. Of our local plan. Part of the Perkins Five Plan includes an examination of W J C C performance on identified standards in comparison with Virginia agreed upon performance levels. This information, based on the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year, is broken down on this slide for you and can be found on page seven in the local plan provided. When we're, when viewing the slide above, a C T E completer is a student who has met the requirements for a career and technical concentration. for career and technical concentration or specialization, and all requirements for high school graduation or an improved alternative education program. Special populations is defined by nine different categories a student may fall in, including students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged students, English-language learners, and students with parents who are active-duty military. In the slide above, you can see that WJCC met and exceeded Virginia-agreed-upon performance levels in all but three of the categories identified here. For the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year, we did not meet performance, the performance level for special populations, in academic proficiency in mathematics and academic proficiency in science, and for all completers in non-traditional program concentration. Academic proficiency looks at students who completed a CTE program and were also enrolled in an academic course for which a Standards of Learning or an SOL end-of-course test is required, where these students attain a passing score on the corresponding test. In the areas of mathematics and science, we fell just below the eighty-five point seven five percent performance level in special populations. Our work across the division in providing intervention and support to all students will support the improvement of these areas in the future. Excuse me. Non-traditional program concentration is the number of CTE completers from underrepresented gender groups who during the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year completed a program that leads to employment in non-traditional fields. The term "non-traditional fields" means occupations or fields of work, such as careers in computer science, technology, or other current and emerging high-skill occupations, for which individuals from one gender comprise less than twenty-five percent of the individuals employed in each such occupation or field of work. An example of this would be females working in the automotive industry. Non-traditional program concentration continues to be an area of challenge in WJCC and a focus of improvement for us as a team. As a division, we have been working to address this area in this school year. We have introduced six new middle-school CTE courses, five of which are currently non-traditional courses. This can support students in deepening their understanding and interest in these areas and provide a pathway to continue their studies in high school. On the slide above, we see a continuation, excuse me, of the Perkins Performance Standards, but with three-year trend data. Here we see increases in reading and technical skills attainment for all completers in special populations. As addressed previously, we see decreases in the areas of math and science. As you review this data, it is helpful to know the overall numbers in each performance standard. For example, in the area of academic proficiency in science for special populations, there was a total of one hundred and thirty-two students with one hundred and five achieving. This means that the difference between WJCC's seventy-nine point five five percent and the eighty-five point seven five percent agreed-upon performance level was eight students. Also, when reviewing the data above, it's helpful to remember that this is only reflective of CTE completers last school year, which means our graduates. These students were typically freshmen in high school during COVID, the COVID year, and emergency locally awarded, awarded verified credits, or ELAVCs, and locally awarded verified credits, LAVCs, do not count towards the above numbers. On this slide, you are able to see three-year trend data for three performance standards, including non-traditional program concentration. Empty cells on this slide represent areas in which special populations data is not reported or pulled by the state. While we did not meet the performance standard this year in non-traditional, we have increased our performance overall by thirty-three percent since the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. Additionally, while reviewing this data, it's important to know that this percentage does not include students who attend New Horizons and completed CTE courses through our partnership with the Career and Technical Education Center there. When looking at the twenty-eight point seven five percent agreed-upon performance level, our performance of twenty-seven point zero one percent was a difference of two students. Here, we are also able to see the growth in work-based learning over the past three years, which we are excited to see is one hundred and thirteen percent for all completers since the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. Annually, we strive to grow in the number of industry credentials our students earn. Last school year, there were one thousand nine hundred and seven total industry credentials earned by WJCC students. On the next slide, you will see a three-year snapshot of this information to provide a historical reference for you. Above is a sampling of the different types of credentials taken and earned by WJCC students in two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. On this slide, you can see a breakdown of industry credentials earned by WJCC students in the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year, including the overall number of individual students who earned one or more credential. For comparison, I have provided the previous two years' data as well. We are proud to see that over the past three years, we have grown by over two hundred and fifty industry credentials earned, or fifteen point seven two percent, and over one hundred and sixty more individual students, or twelve point three percent, earning one or more credential. Also part of the Perkins Local Plan, we are required each year to submit a Career Pathways Plan of Study, aligning specific academic and technical coursework at the secondary and post-secondary level with an identified career cluster and career pathway that meets the needs of industries in the state, region, or local area. This is reflected in Schedule Three, or Page Sixteen of the local plan. For two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, WJCC submitted a plan of study representing the architecture and construction cluster and the design pre-construction career pathway. This plan of study offers a pathway that highlights WJCC's drafting courses at the high school level. There are eight CTE program areas identified within Perkins. Here, you can see all eight areas and where CTE programs are available to WJCC students within each area. Schedules Five through Ten, found on Pages Twenty-one to Thirty-three, refer to our Perkins-supported program areas and allow us to identify activities we use to improve academic and technical skills of students in Schedule Five, provide students with work-based learning opportunities in Schedule Six. I apologize. Develop, improve, or expand the use of technology in Schedule Seven. Provide professional development to teachers, counselors, or administrators associated with the CTE program in Schedule Eight. Use performance standards to continue to improve the performance of these CTE programs in Schedule Nine, and improve, expand, or modernize each particular program area in Schedule Ten. Schedules Eleven through Fourteen, found on Pages Thirty-four to Fifty-six, include narratives providing further explanation and details about our CTE program, the comprehensive local needs assessment, and the information we have already reviewed in this presentation. Here you see a review of the entitlement of funds over the past several years. You can see that this year's Perkins Plan, application, is based on the amount of funding we received for the past school year. Once the state determines WJCC's actual allocation, we will submit a grant amendment that aligns with the new funding amount. The state receives their allocation of federal funds and then applies a funding formula that determines what each locality will receive. The formula is based on the number of students who reside in the school division and also takes into account the number of students aged five through seventeen, who are from families below the poverty level for the preceding fiscal year. Schedules Sixteen through Eighteen, found on Pages Forty to Forty-eight, are the areas in which we develop the budget for WJCC's Perkins allocation. The percentages indicated above are the breakdown of usage of the entitlement of funds shared on the previous slide. As noted in the slide, we have budgeted sixty point six percent to go to capital outlay and equipment. These funds are used to refresh labs, provide hardware and software, such as iPads, three-D printers, and infant simulators for all CTE programs. Twenty-two percent, excuse me, twenty-two point six percent is budgeted to purchase services or services acquired from an outside source. These include professional development, student activities for our special population students, and New Horizons Regional Technical Center. Fourteen point two percent has been budgeted for indirect costs and other charges and internal services, such as conference registration fees, travel and lodging, professional organization memberships, and daily shuttle transportation for dual-enrollment health science students to Virginia Peninsula Community College. And two point six percent is budgeted for personal services, which is used for administrative support for CTE credentialing and completer surveys. As a note, the grant does not, does refer to this line as personal services, not personnel, which can cause confusion at sometimes. The largest percentage here is with capital outlay and equipment. As we continue to grow in our CTE program, the needs to remain current in our equipment and software for students and teachers grow, and redirecting funds to serve in this line serve the best interest of our students. This concludes our formal presentation of the Carl D. Perkins Local Plan. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Walters. Board members? Any questions for Ms. Walter? Riffel?
I was looking at the number slide this is. It's the one with like, all the industry credentials, like nineteen oh seven earned. I didn't know, the WISE financial literacy test, is that required? It's required by the state for students to?
Well, the Economics and Personal Finance course is required, a graduation requirement. The WISE is connected to that course, but technically you can graduate without the WISE if you have a different.
Gotcha. So I guess my question would be is, which, like, of these subjects, like, none of them are required to graduate? These are just things students are doing, other interests to go to CTE-type programs?
As far as the credential or the course?
In general, like, I mean, these are just, these are, what I'd say, like?
Bringing a credential is a component that a student could choose to meet one of the graduation requirements, but you don't have to have a credential to graduate. So yes, these are things that students are choosing to do to be prepared for their next step.
Thank you.
Any other questions before I ask one? No. Can you just expand a little bit for all of us and potentially for viewing public? What the definition of a credential is, as each of these courses, is that one credential per course? Are there some courses that have more? What can you do with?
Sure. So yes, some courses have more than one. There's actually quite a few that are identified by the state of Virginia as what credentials align with every CTE course. So for example, if you look at the screen at this slide, if you see the ASE, on the right-hand side, you'll see ASE brakes, ASE engine repair, engine performance. There's a series of ASE exams. Those all go with our automotive technology courses that our students take at New Horizons. So these types of credentials and architectural drafting, criminal justice, can help students become employed after graduation. It helps them make sure that they are learning the trade or the field that they're in, and they can say to a future employer, "I have passed this and earned this, and that means that I can do X, Y, and Z."
So it equates to a certification that would allow them to get paid for, for what they learned?
Potentially, yes. It helps them get a job.
Okay. Thank you. Riffel?
All right, I guess that's another, how many of our students, like, do we have like, a ratio of students who are getting credentials that are then going into, like, the fields that are kind of in our backyards, like plumbing and to, you know, going to the shipyard? Do we have, like, kind of data on that stuff?
So annually, it just doesn't, it hasn't happened by the time of this presentation. It happens more in May. We receive data from the state to survey our students who have graduated, so we contact our completers from last school year. That's that personnel line, that two point six percent. We actually use those to pay teachers to make these phone calls. It's a scripted survey, so the data is cleaner. And we collect information on what field are you in now, does it align, all of that kind of stuff. And then in the fall, the DOE sends us the results of, of that survey that we completed. So I don't have twenty-two, twenty-three data right now, but we will get it eventually.
I just really want to know if it's an effective program, yeah, based on the funding you provide, you know, and if it should expand, should it not, right? That's kind of like the thoughts as a board member, right?
Sure. And we also have, with our Career Ready Advisory Committee, and just in our, our role in the College and Career Readiness Team, we, we have regular meetings with community partners and organizations on not only what needs do they have in future employer, employees, but what are they seeing as students that come out? And we get really great feedback on how we can adjust our programming to meet the local employment needs.
How much do you advertise this program?
So we have over forty-seven different courses available in career and technical education. We annually have a curriculum fair that we provide as a division, where we encourage families to come out, and we, at that time, as a CTE program, can provide hands-on examples of what you will do and learn in there, and we do invite New Horizons to come to that as well, so students can have that exposure. New Horizons does come to each of our high schools and provides assembly-style information sessions and then sessions during lunches to our students to also bring awareness, in addition to sessions that counselors do with students in classrooms on all courses available. CTE, of course, is included in that as well.
Only reason why I ask is because presumably there's about eleven thousand students, and this is only two thousand. I don't think the other nine thousand go to college. So there's a big population of patients, I mean, not patients, but students who could benefit from this.
Absolutely. And just as a note, what you're seeing here is, is just high school students, so it's not the full eleven thousand.
How many are there? How many high school students are there, do you know?
I won't give you that exact number.
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have that off the top of my head, but I can get that to you easily.
Thank you for that correcting that. Thank you for doing that.
Dr. Kavazas, are you looking at the number of credentials earned when you said there were nearly?
Presume those are students.
So actually, I'm going to pop over to this slide. The one thousand nine hundred and seven is the credentials earned by one thousand five hundred and forty-two individual students, which means that many students earned more than one credential. And so there's a difference in that as well.
Okay.
This is why I prompted my WISE question, because most students are offered to take the WISE test, and, you know, it's, I didn't know it was part of CTE at all. I just thought it was like, learn how to?
So out of the one thousand nine hundred and seven, five hundred and twenty-three were WISE. So about fourteen hundred were additional credentials in other CTE programs.
And is it safe to assume that most of these happen through New Horizons?
No. I can give an actual breakdown at a, at another point, but we have credentials at New Horizons, and many, many happen in our own buildings.
Okay.
I think the program area slide kind of covers what you're talking about.
Oh, yep.
Oh, I see. Yep, okay.
So for example, just to point out a couple, the veterinary medical applications, that happens actually in two places. We have Vet Science in our, in our classrooms here. It's also an option to go to New Horizons and take it there. So the MOS are all in our buildings, just as a couple of examples that popped out.
Okay, thank you. Any, anything else last minute? Other questions before we move on? I think we're all set.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, moving on to item six point zero three, review purchase requests for fire panel replacement at War Hill High School.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, now we're going to move to the operational side of the school division, and Mr. Weaver, Supervisor of School Safety and Emergency Management, is going to introduce the first item. And that will be followed by Mr. Snipes, who will have a number from our CIP this evening. Mr. Weaver?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Heron, and members of the board. This agenda item is to ask for your consideration and approval at the next meeting for replacing the fire alarm control panel at War Hill High School in support of Goals Four and Six. Williamsburg James City County Public Schools is committed to strong safety and security measures on all campuses. Each year, there's a systemic review of safety items, including fire alarm control panels, to ensure WJCC is renewing equipment when necessary and needed. Replacing this older fire panel will allow us to tie the new auxiliary gym fire alarm system in as well. Total cost for this project will be one hundred ninety thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, and funding is available through capital project fund balances. Work would be completed over the summer and be ready for next school year. Purchase would be made using our current contract we have in place with BFPE. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions on fire panels? I think that's it. Thank you. Item four, uh, sorry, six point zero four, review the invitation for bid for interior refurbishment of Berkeley Middle School.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and Dr. Heron. Tonight's proposed agenda item and the remaining seven, support Goal Four of the strategic plan, and they're being brought forward for your consideration and review tonight. Six point zero four is stated. Um, six point zero four is stated as the review of the invitation for bid for the interior refurbishment of Berkeley Middle School. This project was approved in the FY twenty-four capital improvement plan for six hundred thirty thousand, seven hundred dollars. School refurbishment projects are ranked yearly according to priority and condition. Any typical refurbishment uh includes new paint, carpet, and/or tile throughout the school. The work for the Berkeley Middle School refurbishment will consist of demolition and removal of existing casework. Removal and replace of carpeting, painting of designated walls and doorway frames. And painting of interior concrete masonry unit wall assemblies and gypsum board assemblies. The scope also includes an ad alternate to replace CAPE'S work in the media center. The superintendent recommends that the board review the information and be prepared to vote at the April sixteen, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Snipes. Are there any questions from board members on this? I don't think so. Let's move on to item six point zero five.
Item six point zero five is the review is, uh, bringing forth for your consideration and review of purchase request for the interior refurbishment of Matoka Elementary School. This project was also approved in the FY twenty-four CIP in the amount of two hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred dollars. It stated with the previous agenda item, a typical refurbishment includes a new paint, carpet, and/or tile throughout the school. The scope of work for this project includes removal and replacement of carpet. The concrete slab, which will have moisture mitigation, and the painting of interior walls and door frames. The difference between this refurbishment and the previous refurbishment is stated was the um. The addition of the moisture mitigation, which prevents moisture from wicking up through the concrete and into the carpet, which was being replaced with tile. So we don't want tiles to be slippery in classrooms. Um, this project also will require uh carpet replacement throughout the school, unlike at uh Berkeley. You have more carpet in an elementary school and the building will have less square footage for painting. The superintendent recommends the board review the information and be prepared to vote at the April sixteen, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Mr. Snipes, questions?
I actually have a question for the previous item. Can I, am I allowed to go back?
Sure.
Yeah. I think we talked about the, I don't know, this, this is maybe a part of the plan. We, we got it, uh, sorry. I'm looking at the school board question request. And we talked about the middle school um orchestra room. And we'd said that, like, Mr. Snipes, I saw you responded to it. I just wanted to know, like, is it a part of this plan? How is it gonna work? It's like, we're gonna put carpets and paint the walls and then thi- this room's still flooding. It's like, what's, what's, do we have a timeline for that? It didn't really get addressed in that question, and I just wanted to mention before we think about, you know, as I go and go two weeks from now, or next week. And it's like, boy, there's no date for this impending, you know, ceiling of this wall.
That's a good question. You were referring to your question in regards to the um orchestra, um, court enrollment Berkeley Middle School. That is being taken care of out of previous capital improvement plan, which will, will take care of that before the end of the year.
Thank you, yeah. I just wanted to, that's for talking about Berkeley refurbishment to be a place to kind of mention, so thank you.
Yes.
I have one question. I haven't been involved in much of a refurbishment in my career. Wha- what does that involve for? Do you give teachers boxes? They have to box everything up and, and, and it's, how much time, like? And just, just for the viewing audience, how, what does that look like?
Well, it, it, it involves coordination with our principals. Teachers do request boxes to box things up. We ask them to take their personal effects home, so they're not damaged when things are um being removed. And so we remove everything out of that room. Um, and we place it into the hallway, or we place it into a storage unit that is the school board property. We pull the carpet out, we paint, we paint uh walls as well as the door frames, remove carpet, replace that with tile. So yes, it is very invasive project, process.
It's also a great opportunity, Ms. Hunley, for staff members to really examine the materials that they have. Make a determination if those materials remain relevant.
I've been to the lady that had, oh, moving from one school to another, about a hundred and forty boxes I had. So, um, but, but that's not something that's done over ti- yeah, no, I had a lot of, um, so, but that's done. Not like over time or anything. It's during the day, like they get to.
I do, I can't tell you how principals coordinate that. I presume they give their staff time to, to do such. Ms. Worley may be able to answer that question.
Yes, we, we, we chip in.
We make time and, and at schools, we typically get, round up the troops to help if necessary, if there's a lot, so. There'll be support there. All right, thank you.
All right, one more on this one. We went to Matoka today, um, and they're talking about creating some other, like a maker space there. Is that gonna be like? Something that someone included in this refurbishment? I think it's like a kind of a, no? Am I getting, I'm getting like a, don't talk about this thing?
No.
No, I'm, I'm listening. No, we're listening.
It's like a surprise, and I don't know, sorry, Matoka. Um, is it like, I just mean like when they're, that space seems pretty, they're being pretty excited about it when we're there today, the principal and.
Where, where were we?
At Matoka? Yeah.
No, this is just a, includes removing carpet and replacing that with tile, painting.
Yeah.
And so as far as a maker space, I believe that's something, there is no addition to the school that we can currently see, so the principal may be doing something interior to make sure.
I guess I didn't ask my question. I was just saying like, will the, like, will that be done in like tandem together and someone like this project they're kind of like working on is? Individual school and then like, you know, they're painting it, and the coordination of it, it sounds like, it's like, it sounds like a lot of.
Well, I'm not fa- familiar with the project that you're referring to at Matoka. I think that's maybe something that.
I think it's separate, so I, I don't know that there's timeline coordination. This is stuff that's been in the CIP, so this is just kind of standard um rotational. Stuff. I don't, I, I don't think what you're sa- I'm not saying don't ask, but I don't, I just don't think they're related.
I just want like either they'd be affected by, you know, the, the goal of doing both, right? That's what I'm saying, so.
So this will occur over the summer, and so there will be, I don't know how the principal is coordinating the creation of a maker space there. But this will be coordinated over the summer and maybe when this area is finished, the principal will go back in and do some things, but we will have to coordinate.
Yeah, Mr. Riffle, we certainly can reach out to the principal and make sure there's, we don't undo something that's been done by, by the school.
Typically, maker spaces in the library. It's never gonna be in the library.
It's in like a weird like wedged part of the building. You'll see it when you go. It's, it's pretty cool, actually. I think it's like, right now I have a bunch of like wild animal stuff on the wall.
Oh, I know what you're talking about.
You know, talking about, you've all seen it, like.
Yeah.
Whether redoing, it's not a maker space. I don't know they're calling it, but it's some type of like torch stem related, like.
So most of, most of this project will be carpet replacement in the, in the classrooms and painting of walls and, and, and door frames. So that if it's out in any corridors, it will probably not be affected at all, impacted at all.
Super. Thank you, Mr. Snipes.
Were you, were you done with Matoka?
If they are.
Okay, all right, let's move on to six point zero six.
Six point zero six uh is the review of invitation for, for bid um for Norwich Elementary School electrical upgrades. Now, this project was adopted in a prior year. It was in FY twenty twenty-three CIP um for the, with the budget amount of a hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars. The work in this project is to furnish and install complete electrical systems for the replacement of panel boards at Norwich Elementary School. The FY twenty-three budget, as stated, was one hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars. And we've used design cost of thirteen thousand, a hundred and seventy-five dollars, leaving a balance of a hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. The superintendent recommends the board review the information and be prepared to vote at the April sixteen, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Any questions on electrical upgrades? All right, I think we can move on.
All right. Uh, six point zero seven uh is the review of purchase, purchase requests for Berkeley Middle School lighting fixture upgrades. This project was approved in the FY twenty-four CIP um for a budgeted amount of a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. This also was a recommendation from a facility condition assessment that was conducted back in twenty sixteen. Uh, and we, and it was recommended that we replace them this year, so we are doing so. The scope of the work for this project includes replacing all the T twelve fluorescent light fixtures. Um, which primarily are in the original part of the buil- building. Um, you know, hundred, the one hundred hallway, the six hundred hallway, the fine arts hallway, cafeteria, and gym. The superintendent recommends the board review the purchase request and be prepared to vote at the April sixteen, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Any questions on light fixtures at Berkeley? All right, let's move on. Six point zero eight.
Six point zero eight is the request, uh, review, the purchase request for a walk-in refrigerator at uh replacement at Stonehouse Elementary School. Now, this project was also approved in FY twenty-four uh CIP in the amount of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And as part of the division's uh replacement cycle, the Stonehouse walk-in refrigerator is scheduled to be replaced on it before its twenty years of useful life. The scope of the work includes, of course, removing the exi- bless you, removing the existing walk-in refrigerator freezer from the kitchen. Pouring a new concrete pad and installation of a new, larger walk-in refrigerator. The superintendent recommends the board review the purchase request and be prepared to vote for, at the April sixteen, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Uh, looks like Mr. Hoseng has a question.
I have a similar question that Mr. Riffle had. Um, when we were, uh, were at Stonehouse earlier, they were talking about the potential that they were renovating the kitchen area. Um, or. I, and it sounded like they were gonna do it over the, over the summer. So I don't know how this is, would affect that or go on to. That aspect of it, or maybe they were, that maybe that was a thought that they were gonna hopefully do or contemplate doing, or.
At the, at the present time, we do not have in the capital improvement plan to renovate the kitchens. However, Ms. Haley and I are looking and reviewing. How our kitchens are being um used and see if we can make them more productive and efficient by buying smaller equipment. And using some funds to purchase different equipment. But this would not affect that at all.
I don't know, weird question, maybe.
Questions.
Um, report of concrete slab. I used, I used to work in a kitchen and. The problem that I had as someone who operated the kitchen was that like they had a cart that needed to get into the.
Yes, yes.
Is it, is there gonna be ramp to this?
There will be a ramp.
Oh, super.
There will be a ramp. Be a ramp, yes.
Don't do that. I don't know, whoever builds buildings, that's just dumb. I mean, I'm sorry.
You're right.
It's my personal vendetta of my sixteen, you know, first job I ever got.
Yeah, it's no fun trying to get, get up into those uh freezers with all that equip, with all those food, with no ramp. So yes.
Thank you.
Can we name it the Randy Riffle Ramp?
He's down. He's named on my first boss.
I'll write that on the side of this ramp. I'll call it the Randy Riffle Ramp.
Draw it in the concrete pad.
Yeah.
Have to come in and sign his name.
I wanna see it installed, and I'll, I'll christen it, you know.
All right. All right, well, we have any other questions about the refrigerator? Are we ready to move on? Six point zero nine?
We're almost done. We're almost done. Uh, review the purchase request for the Jamestown weight room expansion. Um, this project was approved in the FY twenty-four CIP in the amount of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The current ra- weight room does not meet the standard size for WJCC high schools. In fact, the project will explain, expand the weight room size to an equitable size as War Hill and Lafayette High Schools. The scope of work for this project includes demo, demolition of several walls and a subdivide the weight room and adjacent laundry room. Installing new room doors to the main corridor, relocating some existing utilities, and patching and finishing the floors. We also plan to remove the stairs um to the mezzanine and relocate them to, that will add some additional space. The FY twenty-four, again, the FY twenty-four CIP budget was a hundred and thirty thousand for this expansion. And the superintendent recommends the board review the purchase request and be prepared to vote at the April sixteen, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Anything? Any questions? All right, let's move on to the last one, six point one zero.
Uh, this is the review of purchase request for three maintenance vans. Uh, WJCC developed a bus and vehicle replacement plan in twenty fourteen, and that plan includes uh replacing. A proposed number of vehicles based on my age, mileage, current replacement values, safety, et cetera. The recommendation to purchase three maintenance vans is to maintain the current replacement plan. Which denotes replacing vehicles at fifteen years of service and/or a hundred and fifty thousand miles. Currently, WJCC schools has two vans at fifteen years of service and one van at a hundred and fifty thousand miles. The total cost of three maintenance vans is a hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars. And they will be purchased under EVA contract number CTR zero zero five eight five zero from Carter Myers Automotive. A budget transfer for, from instructional salaries and benefits to the operations equipment replacement in the amount of a hundred and thirty-three thousand, eighty-one dollars is requested. And those additional funds will be, will be um used to add required equipment to each van. The superintendent recommends the school board review the purchase request and be prepared to vote at the April sixteen, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Mrs. Donner?
So the um, the transfer of the salaries and benefits is what did, what was unused that then allows this money to be available to make that transfer?
We'll go with the first lady of finance over there, Ms. Hunley.
That'd be from vacant positions and normal attrition savings.
Any other questions on the vans?
Do we sell these vans?
What was that?
It, it, I'm assuming there's like vans that like get sold? Is it, how about, is that like a county thing? How's it?
The, the vans that we are, we.
Yeah, no longer using.
Yes, they will go on, they will go on a surplus through the county. They will put them on their site.
Gotcha.
All right, I think, uh, I think you're done.
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Snipes. Okay, and we will move on to um. Uh, sorry, seven point zero one, strategic plan update on Goal Three.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're delighted this evening to start our updates on the strategic plan for this year. And Ms. Wall has uh agreed to, to launch us off this evening with Goal Three, which focuses on communications and engagement. Um, over the next uh three months, we will bring updates on all of our strategic goals, including data and progress made in each of the areas. Thank you, Ms. Wall, for taking lead this evening.
Of course. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Heron. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on strategic plan Goal Three. And share about the exciting things happening with the communications and engagement team. Goal Three centers on the division's commitment to quote cultivate a culture of open and effective communication to inform and engage all stakeholders. There are five strategies within this goal. Our area of focus this year was to develop and implement plans to more successfully communicate and engage with our stakeholders. In the coming slides, however, you will see where there is overlap between Strategy One, our focus strategy. And the other Goal Three strategy areas, and in some cases even with other goals. Developing and implementing communications and engagement plans centers around our various audiences. A component of that work is supporting recruitment of prospective employees and retention of current employees. The Teacher Supply Shop is a resource for WJCC school staff to order and receive free classroom or workplace supplies. Teachers so commonly dip into their own pocket to stock their classroom, so just over a year ago, the Teacher Supply Shop opened as a completely donor-supplied shop. Where staff can quote-unquote purchase common supplies they need without spending a dime. Staff members are given an initial allotment of bucks and have been given or can earn more throughout the year to replenish their balance. This school year through February, we have filled seven hundred and eighty-five orders for four hundred and seventy-five customers. In addition to those stats, every new WJCC school's teacher was gifted a starter kit, if you will. Um, through the launch onboarding program, staff selected a sample of supplies that would be most impactful to them as they started their career at WJCC. The Teacher Supply Shop is supported by our partnerships with donors and the dedication of volunteers that help deliver orders to the schools. This year, we continue to dedicate attention to growing our LinkedIn presence. Our formal presence was non-existent about a year and a half ago, so simply posting content and engaging with our audience over the last eighteen months. Has shown an increase in our followers. While I don't anticipate our follower growth to sustain at these high levels in future years. We did see seventy-six percent growth in followers from the end of last February to the end of this February. Each social media platform reports data differently. On LinkedIn, impressions are defined as the views when at least fifty percent of our content is displayed on the user's screen. Or if they click on our content. So this data measures growth from July first to February twenty-eighth last school year compared to this school year. I'll share more information about social media in a later slide, but consistently across platforms, we know that content featuring people. Almost always outperforms generic posts with just text or graphics. The post announcing Dr. Heron as Region Two Superintendent of the Year was our highest performing LinkedIn post this year by far. With more than thirty-four hundred impressions alone and a hundred and eighty interactions. The post generated lots of wonderful connections and broad reach, including a shout-out to Dr. Heron from a former student in Oklahoma. This post was made in March, however, so it's not represented in the overall impression data noted on the slide. People-focused content not only performs better, but it's more compelling and interesting. We love to celebrate our division. You've seen that through recent School Board Spotlight videos and other venues I'll share this evening. A video about our division's bus rodeo not only told the story of something happening behind the scenes. But also showcased the training and support available to employees in our division. And highlighted the passion and dedication our employees have for their job and serving the community. Let's take a look. Let's hopefully take a look.
Is this your idea, Kim?
Yeah, this is my idea.
Yeah, this is my idea.
We're doing uh, some training, we're doing a rodeo. We've got approximately fifteen drivers that are involved in this. We have the freight line, food pickup, the rail crossing and the uh, parallel parking that uh, that they're all involved. It's primarily just a fun event. It gets them out, but they're having a little fun and they're working on their skills right now. You know, we, we always try to improve the way our retention, our counterparts, to kinda uh, bling about it or, or even sharpen up some of their skills if they need some help with it. But you know, there's a lot of benefits to doing a rodeo like this.
Both of the tennis balls, they have front tire, and running their dual tires, feel it without touching any tennis ball.
I couldn't pass that.
It's just something that you, you know, do to basically test your skills to see if what you're doing is correct, you know? All of a sudden, you're on the driving party.
I, I greatly appreciate my drivers, my aides, my mechanics and my staff. They've done a phenomenal job this year, they really have, and uh, and I just wanna congratulate them and thank, thank them for all their efforts and accomplishments this year.
In a similar vein, last fall, we launched hidden hero, a hidden heroes campaign focused on celebrating support employees. Many of our behind the scenes colleagues without whom the division would not operate effectively. This campaign was also dual purpose, definitely a celebration of our existing team, but also a message of recruitment for those who may consider joining our team. We could show off some aspects of the job while our greatest spokespeople, our colleagues, described what they did and why their position is meaningful to them. Hidden heroes are not to be confused with heroes of hope, however. Heroes of hope are employees nominated by anyone in our community, a colleague, a family member, or a student um, in appreciation for the big and small ways that they've made a difference. And finally, stay tuned this spring as we kick off our soaring superstars campaign focused on teachers who are new to WJCC schools this year. As you may remember, a few slides ago, I mentioned that they launched their career with us this fall and now they are soaring. Turning specifically to social media data and the broader community, community audience, the follower or subscriber numbers reported here reflect change from February twenty eighth twenty twenty-three to February twenty eighth twenty-four. Follower data is one way to measure our audience. Last year, I reported that I'd anticipate our data to eventually plateau, especially on platforms where we have been active the longest. But follower growth on Facebook grew more this year than over the previous one-year period. Continued decline on X or Twitter will cause us to revisit our future efforts with that platform. And outside of audience, there are various ways to monitor other data. As I alluded to earlier, each platform has a different way of defining it and reporting it. Engagement rates generally tell us interaction on posts while reach, impressions, or views tell us how many people actually see the content, even if they don't interact with it. Both measures are important, but are more valuable on a micro level. While I've listed reach and impression data or view data from July first to February twenty eighth this year as compared to the same time period last year, this data as an aggregate isn't as valuable as it is when we monitor performance on specific posts. We want our audience to see our celebrations, whereas we want them to share or click on items calling for action like a job fair post or kindergarten registration link. A quick sample of our top performing posts on Facebook again highlight our celebrations, our people, and visibility across our community. And the same holds true on Instagram. An interesting note on the reel or the video short that's uh, screenshot on the left. It's a thirty-nine second post that's already had over eight hours of watch time. Our second community-wide mailing was delivered to more than forty-one thousand households at the beginning of March. The content within mirrors our target areas across other media, celebrating students and staff, promoting recruitment, and encouraging engagement. We had one hundred and ninety-eight individuals scan the musical's QR code and two hundred and thirty-seven individuals access content through the unique mailer URL. Anecdotally, we've also received positive feedback on the piece and we intend to continue with this effort to reach areas of our community that may not otherwise have a direct communications connection to our schools. Engaging with reporters and responding to media inquiries is another audience and external communications effort that we monitor. Last year, we tallied thirty media interactions. That's the number of stories we pitched to or coordinated with media that exceeded our target of twenty-five. We maintained the same target of twenty-five for this year and already surpassed it through the first two-thirds of the school year with thirty-eight interactions. A component of our outreach and engagement efforts targeting our family audience is hosting family academies. Beyond opportunities available to the whole community, we focus this year on providing opportunities geared to specific demographic groups. For example, the empower and elevate series is geared toward families of fifth grade special education students and preparing for their transition to middle school. The kindergarten kickoff webinar was targeted for families with students in the class of twenty thirty-seven. Those are students who will be starting kindergarten next year. Last year, we hosted four academies. This year through February, we hosted five with another five scheduled in the last third of the year. Family outreach and engagement at the division level extends beyond family academies. As has been discussed through our budget meetings, we were excited to expand our outreach efforts to Spanish-speaking families this year through our part-time contract interpreter in addition to our full-time liaison. Together, they support families in all facets of engaging in their child's education. We're also excited to offer our first-ever family fest for incoming kindergarten families later this month. The goal of the event is to bring any incoming kindergarten family in and move them at least one step further along in the registration process, if not to full registration completion. And then, of course, to celebrate our incoming students, we'll have live music, food trucks, family friend, family-friendly activities, and more. When I presented last year, I noted that our success over this year would be evidenced by continuing to create content and celebrate our story, evaluating the success of our community-wide mailing, maintaining high levels of activity across social media, including expanding our presence on LinkedIn, and enhancing outreach and partnerships to support family academies, the teacher supply shop, and more. I hope you've heard those pieces through this presentation, but I also want to celebrate our team's accomplishments in two other categories. This winter, Chesbra, the Chesapeake School Public Relations Association, which represents school divisions across Maryland, Virginia, West Virginia, and DC, honored WJCC schools with two awards of excellence. One for our engage with us portal under the website category and two, the second, for the teacher supply shop under the special campaign category. Our team is dedicated to this work because we are dedicated to our community and we're deeply appreciative to be recognized by a group of our peers across the region. In looking ahead, our foundation is strong and we will build on it in the coming year by continuing to highlight student and staff accomplishments and shared division news, producing events and resources that increase or enhance families' engagement in their students' development and success, and building further volunteer and partnership connections to meaningfully enhance student learning opportunities and meet staff needs. And that completes my report for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Wall, and congratulations on your award, your team's award. Uh, Mrs. Hunley, looks like you have a question?
Um, a couple of questions. So the kindergarten uh, registration, is that free? That, I'm assuming that's free that so parents don't have to bring money for the food trucks and the um.
The food trucks are paid, that that, that's an option available. The event runs from three to seven thirty, so if a family chooses to join us over dinnertime and they would like to pay for a meal there, they're welcome to, or they don't have to.
Okay, and um, if it rains, does that move into Berkeley?
Yes, it'll be inside.
And then the other thing, does, do we still, we used to have a local channel that used to show like local events? Do we still, do we access that at all for communication? For, from the schools?
With an asterisk, yes. Channel forty-seven is still available to us. We can upload, um, I believe the school board meetings play on there as well as anything else that we upload to the county's system to, to broadcast on there. We've been in ongoing conversations with them to update, so like, could they pull in, for example, any of our social media feeds or any of our calendar feeds for the website, from the website, excuse me, um, to refresh that look a little more beyond the videos?
Yeah, cuz I did notice, I was just drawn to the bus driver that was smiling and I noticed that if you clicked on there, she was talking, but it's like a minute or so, and I still think we're missing the opportunity to do the day in the life of a bus driver, which I know would run longer than a minute and thirty seconds, but that would be something that maybe our students could help with that are in the career in technology, the technological part with videotaping that maybe could be uploaded on channel forty-seven to try to recruit some, some people in the community as bus drivers. But that's just, that's, you know, that's just me thinking out of the box.
Ms. Hunley, we do have access to putting things on a station, but we don't have staff dedicated to that part of the organization. If we were to really use that channel effectively, it probably would mean that an additional staff who are very skilled in that area to do that work, would that be?
I think that's fair, yes.
Okay, uh, you, Mrs. Hunley, you're done?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Riffle?
I'm sure. Um, uh, WHRO has a great resource that's like, they cover our story, like audio and visual. They also will run like a, if it's something that we wanna highlight one of the career paths, something we're trying to recruit for or something like that, or they run it on their radio stations for free, um, for every one of the school divisions that are part of WHRO. So it'd be a great place to kinda highlight one of our one-minute and thirty-second clip of the most needed job here or something, cuz we have great, I mean, they're awesome videos and they're, they're pretty short and I'm sure that you could also film a new one or something different or something, you're having the queue with them and it seemed like they have a great like option and they're like, please take us up on this, like they're looking to fill that bandwidth of time, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Any other questions or comments? Um, I just had one that, about different um, different social media platforms. Are we, are we targeting specific, I mean, every social media platform sort of has a different focus and I assume we, are we targeting content on different platforms for different um, goals? Like I would assume LinkedIn might be hoping to recruit people versus just hi- highlight, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. So exactly right on LinkedIn and I would say that we're, this is a transition year, so we, because we hadn't been present on that platform, we didn't really have a, a followership, so even our existing employees that have LinkedIn accounts were not connected to us, therefore they wouldn't be receiving our updates. So building that audience first and now we can more, better target the recruitment messages. Um, we consistently see Instagram has a higher rate of our student followers. Um, I, we were laughing today about our welcome back message that was posted on Sunday night and some folks who weren't as interested in coming back on Monday commenting. Compared to Facebook where we generally see more parents and community members coming back. So yes, definitely different audiences that we see.
Supposedly where the boomers hang out on Facebook, right? Yeah, okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for that, for that thorough update. Find my agenda again. All right, uh, we have one more uh, information item, seven point zero two, generative artificial intelligence overview.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, uh, Kristen Bar, Ms. Barr is going to give us an, an update on, on what we're doing with, with artificial intelligence. We felt we wanted to bring the board some information about how we're working to integrate uh, this into teaching and learning in, in a very careful and thoughtful way. Um, Ms. Barr, so over to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. I'm excited to join you today to share information about generative artificial intelligence and how WJCC instructional technology has been working to thoughtfully and purposefully lead integration of this tool in teaching and learning. First, a common definition of what generative artificial intelligence is. Generative AI is a subset of artificial intelligence that creates new text, images, audio, video, and code based on information that it has been pre-trained on. Generative AI became widely known in November twenty twenty-two when OpenAI made their generative AI engine, ChatGPT, free and available to the public. Since that time, we've seen generative AI integrated into Microsoft and Google search engines and countless other generative AI programs created and marketed, many specifically for K-12 education. The exploration and use of generative AI aligns with goals one, two, and six of our strategic plan. Additionally, Governor Youngkin released Executive Directive Number Five on September twentieth, twenty twenty-three. This executive order focused on recognizing the risks and opportunities of artificial intelligence. It aimed to ensure responsible, ethical, and transparent use of AI technology by state government to protect citizens' rights and enhance government efficiency. The directive emphasized the importance of preparing for AI technology's transformative impact by establishing standards, protocols, and guidelines across governmental sectors, including education and workforce development. Specifically, it stated the goal for collaboration with the Department of Education and institutions of higher education with, to promote guidelines for use of AI tools which would impact learning and prohibit cheating on schoolwork, examine potential uses of AI tools for personalized tutoring, and include AI-related topics within technology, computer science, and data analytics courses. Executive Order Number Thirty, released in January, is the follow-up to Executive Directive Number Five. In it, the deployment of AI technologies is outlined and guidance provided by experts for the use of AI products within the state government of Virginia. The directive established measures for various agencies and institutions, including the Department of Education, to ensure the ethical and effective implementation of AI. Those are expanded upon for the K-12 environment in the Guidelines for AI Integrations Throughout Education in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Guidelines for AI integration throughout education in the Commonwealth of Virginia are comprised of three key components. Guiding principles, strategies for success, and roles and responsibilities. Upon review, we were pleased to find that the steps already in progress in WJCC were directly in line with the state guidelines. Guiding principles. The guiding principles include adherence to established policies and standards, education about digital citizenship and ethics as applied to generative AI use, and the use of AI to augment and empower learning but not replace human judgment in the role of teachers and learners. Strategies for success. Strategies for success include the encouragement of exploration of generative AI tools, starting with educators, to experience the potential applications to enrich education as well as the risks and challenges to consider. Finally, roles and responsibilities. Roles and responsibilities emphasize the shared partnership between the state, school divisions, staff, learners, and families for essential understanding, guided ethical application, and responsible use of generative AI. Along those lines, I'd like to take a moment now to acknowledge that these summaries were initially produced by Magic School AI, one of the freely available generative AI tools developed for K-12 educators. I reviewed and edited the results for purposes of this presentation and the citation added there on the slide is formatted according to APA recommendations. As previously mentioned, the work that has already been done by the WJCC instructional technology team and the work that is being continued, which is highlighted in the timeline there, is in alignment with state recommendations. A focus has been made to research the emerging technology and ongoing changes, coach staff members who have shown an interest in the tool and provide learning opportunities to all staff members. In January of this year, an AI and education information and resource page was published on the WJCC Insider for our instructional staff. As you can see, the resource page includes background information on the tool as well as links to more specific information in areas such as ethics, prompt engineering, tools, and frequently asked questions. as well as links to more specific information in areas such as ethics, prompt engineering, tools, and frequently asked questions. To date, this page has been accessed over a hundred and sixty-five times. The VDOE has indicated that generative AI use by students will be integrated in the Virginia Standards of Learning, not only in computer science and digital learning integration standards, but in all content areas. Specifically, though, the two thousand twenty-four Computer Science Standards will include age-appropriate use of generative AI. Looking forward to the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year, the WJCC Instructional Technology Team is ready to support teachers in their implementation of the new standards or skills related to generative AI through continued professional learning and coaching opportunities, collaboration and co-teaching of lessons, and provision of generative, of templates and resources with parameters for ethical inclusion of generative AI in assignments. As with the use of all digital resources, digital citizenship and academic integrity will be emphasized. Thank you for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Hunley.
Well, I am very, I don't know much about AI. So I'm trying to figure out, so let's say a student uses this, knows when they submit their paper, if they've used that, does something like a bing, 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 this is, um, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out how do they know that they used it, like?
Right, yes. So we do have a couple of things in place. So first, there's of course potential for student misuse and we recommend that teachers, as they're giving assignments and working with students, emphasize digital citizenship and academic integrity as they would with any method for plagiarism or cheating. Um, and really emphasizing getting to know your students, those relationships and their writing. So in the same way that they would know something might have been copied and pasted from somewhere on the internet or something along those lines, they would be able to recognize that the writing produced by generative AI was not that of the students or in line with what they would usually write. Um, we ask that they model transparency in use like I did in our presentation today so that students see it's okay to use this as long as I cite it appropriately as they would any other resource. Um, and we're going to work on, as I mentioned, providing resources for a scale of inclusion. On this assignment, you can use it to generate ideas, but on this assignment, you can't use it at all. Or, you know, maybe a one through five or a red, yellow, green, you know, depending on age level and appropriateness. Um, in terms of detection, to be quite honest, the, there are detectors out there. They're not great. Um, they're kind of playing catch up with the technology as it's developing. We do have, um, a tool that's integrated into Canvas available to all high school teachers that does have an AI detection. It'll give a percentage of suspected AI writing that's highlighted and there's some reasoning why it was noted as such. And we really encourage teachers to use that as a basis of a conversation with that student and potentially their families in terms of the course of action following. So that was a long answer to get to the end.
Thank you, Ms. Barr. Mr. Hossein?
In the, um, agenda, it talks about AI posing risks that must be carefully managed. And part of that risk is probably what Ms. Hunley was just talking about with the plagiarism and everything. I guess what are the other risks that that you see and then how are, can they be mitigated, um, with the school system?
Sure. So one risk just off the top of my head is the risk of bias and hallucination by these tools. So they generate the information or they produce the information based on what's available on the internet. So if they're referencing um, information that leans one way or another, or they're trained in the the large language model in the in the background on information that is biased in nature or that doesn't yet exist, it'll fill in the blanks. So it's kind of like when you're doing predictive test, text with a Google search, it guesses what you might want to hear or what you might wanna search based on what you've previously searched and things of that nature. So again, it falls under digital citizenship and our, um, work with teachers and our librarians and staff at the schools for verifying your resources and making sure that what you read is in fact true and not opinion and and those sorts of things. So verifying the sources of the information, what type of websites, or if you can verify it in another location, for example, things of that nature. So it will be part, mitigating that risk is part of the digital citizenship component of how these teachers will introduce this into their lessons and their projects or papers.
So it falls under plagiarism. It'll fall now under plagiarism as far as?
Yes, ma'am, that's where we see it, yes. So cheating is, like, kind of the the perspective we're taking is is cheating is cheating if you're presenting work that you didn't create as something that you did or that of something of your own. And it's not, then that's not something that's of integrity.
Any other questions from Ms. Barr? So sort of along the lines of, I guess, what Mr. Hossein was saying. When you have your own, yes, it's just a person who has their own device. It learns, you know, smartphone or whatever, it learns what you typically search for, what kind of websites. When you have a school division or or shared devices or devices that might might be used by different people, would that create confusion with with AI in terms of how things are, how it learns, what people are looking for?
I think it learns on a broader scale than that and that's a little bit beyond kind of my understanding of the background of it. But, um, in terms of the results that it produces specifically towards an audience, it may, so it may be that if you use a device and then I use it, it may give me a result that may be more tailored to what you had previously searched, but it would still give me information. I just may need to follow up and say, can you phrase that for a high school eleventh grade student and put the, and have it perhaps tailor the way that it provides the result, but the information that it has access to is the same. It's a matter of the manner in which it's presented.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Was that a hand raised, Mrs. Donner?
Nope.
No, okay. All right, any other questions before we wrap this one up?
Just be a quick comment, it it's here, it's being used, uh, and I just wanna thank Ms. Barr, Barr and her staff uh, and all of our technology integration specialists for for really creating an environment where teachers can learn to use it and learn and teach students how to use it productively and for the right reasons. And then getting out ahead and and having structures in place is very important at this point in time. So thank you very much for the work of you and your staff.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much. That seems, to me, this would be a very daunting task.
It's a little daunting with a moving target, but we're working on it.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we will move on to just three policies tonight. What's going on?
Dr. Keever, thank you.
Slacking of the policy committee, no.
You said just three, Miss Wordigo. I mean, we strive to bring as many as possible.
I know.
We'll load up for for May.
Okay.
Ready to rock and roll?
Yes.
Okay, terrific. So eight zero one is policy, it's revision to policy EFC, Energy Management Conservation. Uh, this policy in concert with eight zero two, uh, we see is a an opportunity to revise and combine some language pieces. There are not corresponding, uh, VSBA policies for either of those two, these two. Uh, administratively, we're recommending that we take some of the key language from EFC and EFM, combine them together, and then take out some of the more operationally driven, administratively driven items and put them into a corresponding regulation for policy EFC. Um, the content of that regulation is included in Board Docs for you. Specifically with policy EFC, uh, there's been a section title added in lines two through four, uh, lines seven through fourteen, the the content was shifted directly from EFM, the other policy that I referenced. Content in lines fifteen and sixteen were moved to a revised regulation. Lines eighteen and nineteen and twenty-three and twenty-four removed based on what we felt like was redundancy in other parts of this particular policy or the regulation. Lines twenty-eight through thirty-eight were moved into the regulation that I mentioned, cross references were updated, et cetera. Uh, I I think we should stress that we we believe that energy management and conservation and being in a, as an environmentally sustainable organization is appropriate and important. Uh, we also feel like, uh, the policy ought to be broad in parameter and the regulation uh, more narrow in scope, and so that's how we've approached this.
Thank you, Dr. Keever. Are there any questions, Mr. Riffle?
And so to be clear, we're removing a section entirely and then basically summarizing, adjusting it to be smaller. I have a few questions because of that, if that's okay. But first, I guess my first question is like, am I correct in that thinking?
I I think you are, you're, you are correct. We are, in essence, recommending that policy EFM be retired in full and then specific parts of EFM be incorporated into the revision of EFC or into the created regulation of EFCR. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify before I ask the two questions then.
Sure.
Um, the first one is removing the sections from line twenty-three, I guess, on EFC. It says the principals will be accountable for the energy management. So now that we're removing that section, who is now responsible? Is it? You know, I know you're trying to add it to a broad sector, but like, it says clearly here about audits and stuff, but like, they don't mention audits again at all in this phrasing. And so I just wanna know how, you know, will we looking at the accurate records of energy consumption and who will be accountable? Is it, is it us? Is it superintendent, you know?
Right, I I believe the regulation, which is a corresponding document within Board Docs, talks about head custodians and and members of our custodial team having some responsibilities therein. One of the pieces with indicating that principals have responsibility for it in terms of that that's not a part of their evaluative criteria within the the standard evaluation process. And so that's something that we gen- genuinely needed to remove from them in in place where it is probably more appropriate and that would be members of our custodial staff.
Sure, okay. Um, I totally understand to an extent, um, you know, principals have staff and people who are better suited for some of the things we're asked to do. Um, but I'm I'm a little concerned that we're removing sections where we, um, just really describe, where we describe that students and employees all contribute to this stuff, like, I mean, it's this is not a VDOE policies for us to like then remove parts of where you, you know, explicitly, I think we're saying that, oh, we're gonna do this, but then not having any language that says, you know, everyone contributes to this is kind of like not good in my own presumption. It's like, how are we gonna move towards it, you know? Or do we have such energy efficient facilities now that we no longer need to care? You know, when teachers turn off devices or what, it doesn't really, you know, we don't really have anything. That's now it's on the custodian. It's like, I don't really love that relationship now, so.
Uh, go ahead, Ms. Donner.
I just, is when we were discussing this during policy committee, I think it's the, like, thinking about from a policy perspective, wanting that to be kind of higher level. And then when you click into EC, EFC dash R, the clean copy, it has you know, every student employee will expect it to contribute to energy efficiency. And so all of the regulations up to how we will implement the policy get to some of the things that you're bringing up around, uh, being more specific about who's responsible and how we will do that. So kind of thinking about the two things in conjunction.
So to be clear, we're not removing it. So it's somewhere else?
Right, so it's out, right, it's in the regulation. So the policy just is more of a higher level. We will be, you know, at, we will do energy management conservation. And then the R, which is the regulation, explains how we'll do it, who's responsible. And so much of that, what was removed is now in the regulation.
Do you see that regulation on your, um, Board Docs? It's the third attachment under data source.
Is it under eight point one or?
Yeah, it's the far right.
Yeah, second, but you, someone can move on. I I'm getting where we're going, so if someone has another question or something.
Okay, we'll let Mr. Riffle look at that. Were there any other, um, questions on these? I guess two, since we're retiring eight point zero two and revising eight point zero one. No questions? Mr. Riffle, do you want a minute still to?
I'm good. I just wanna mostly just for the public to, you know, and kind of thing like, we're not removing a section where it says like, you know, now it's on the custodial staff. It's like, it's still on everyone that plays the team, you know, to do this stuff right. And it's not, that's my only concern. I didn't want it to be like, hold on, who's, who's like, they're gonna, I mean, I'm clear they're gonna walk around the the facility and take care of it, right? It's their, kind of their, in their occupational job description, but I just wanted to make sure like we are still, students should know that, like, turn off lights at home, it's good for mom and dad, you know? Trying to teach good things about being a good consumer, you know, the next level stuff, so, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Riffle. I think we can move on to eight point zero three.
Yes, ma'am. Eight point zero three, excuse me, is, uh, policy JM, physical restraint and seclusion. This policy was last revised in January of twenty twenty-one. Uh, we've also reviewed the VSBA model policy. I I wanna start the presentation this evening by indicating that the the policy itself, uh, we think in the revisions bring, being, bring, excuse me, being brought forward, there you go, is clarifying language in the current policy. And our attorney reviewed and determined that our current policy is, as written, is legally sufficient. However, feedback from the policy committee in CAC determined that the proposed language that we're bringing forward would help provide further clarity uh, to the potential use of restraint and seclusion within WJCC. The changes to the policy do not impact or alter any of our current existing practices on the use of restraint and seclusion within our school division. I think it's also important to note that this policy applies to all students and personnel within WJCC. And it comes and it's pulled directly from Virginia Code twenty-seven fifty-five. Uh, I've got some other, um, information that I can share as we get into the discussion about that. As you look at the policy revisions themselves, you'll note that lines ten through thirteen, per the recommendation, uh, is where we see the changes. So, um, specifically the green is a change in relation to what our current policy reads. So it's lines ten and eleven. Lines twenty-four through twenty-six, uh, based on feedback from the attorney, we've added this clause as it's found in Virginia Code and it clarifies the language regarding when property damage can potentially justify a restraint or seclusion. We've also updated the legal and cross references.
Thank you, Dr. Keever. Um, I see two hands. So let's start with Mrs. Hunley and then.
Okay, so I know that some, I think William and Mary students came. Did this come before us because there were some concerns and do, did these get addressed in whatever concerns they had about restraint, restraining? Just curious.
I wouldn't say that it's coming now because of the presentation from a previous meeting. We've known that the the code has been revised and we needed to review and update this policy and intended to bring it when we brought it. Uh, I, the the timing of which, uh, seemed to correspond pretty tightly with when William and Mary group came forward. There, there may be continued contention that, um, the language that we are bringing forward now doesn't meet their parameters as an organization. However, we feel like it remains legally sufficient and feel comfortable with what we're bringing forward.
Yeah, I guess that's what my question pertains to, um, cuz you're talking about code sections. You said Virginia Code's twenty-seven point what?
It's twenty dash seven fifty dash five.
Okay, and the code section that the law students were referring to is code section twenty-two point one dash two hundred and ninety-seven nine that, dot one point one. So it's clearly not something that they're gonna be happy with, which is the people who, you know, would, I think I have the same thought of Ms. Hunley of like, we're talking about, we should be talking about for people who are actively pursuing these cases in our division, right? We're actually, and I don't know what it looks like in legality or with the lawyer, but um, these people are attorneys and they are fighting them across the Commonwealth and they are trying to actually help us and say like, you should do it like this because there are two House bills that refer to this section, um, and we should, I'm not saying the policy committee made a mistake, but I mean, you, you didn't look into this part of the code clearly, they're not in the same section, so.
Well, I think part of the, part of the contention, uh, in in my review was over the word or. Honestly, if you go back to lines nine and ten, or excuse me, ten and eleven, and if the the presentation from from that team focused on how the items were listed when a restraint or seclusion may be appropriate. Uh, and and through our conversation with the policy committee, through our review with CAC and in consultation with the attorney, those lines ten and eleven, we feel are legally sufficient and we are entirely comfortable with. That addresses your concern.
But we're still not in compliance with VDOEs two thousand and one. Uh, we're still not in compliance with BDOE's two thousand and one effective regulations. That's what we're saying.
No, we, we are in compliance. I'm saying that we are in compliance.
Okay. But we're not in compliance with this code section, the one I referred to.
No, I think, I think we are in compliance with code. I think that. We may hear a difference of opinion relative to other organizations and their perspective of how something is written. And or ought to be in policy. Does that make sense?
Do you have one more question? Okay, um, I just think, um, or my question would be. Like, how do we then involve the stakeholder group that's clearly in our community that wants to advocate for this in the future? I think that's like. Right, if we're just saying the policy committee is doing this stuff, this is clearly a heavy section of the code that we're disagreeing on. This is restraint and this is stuff that leads to. You know, lawsuits and things. How do we get them to be part of the stakeholder?
What specifically are you referring to that you?
We're not satisfying that group that came to us and talked about the section. And so it would be bad of me as a public servant to not say like, we should listen to. So I would say it's local experts on this issue to an extent of to include in this policy, at least like giving an explanation of why we're not doing that to an extent. Like, you feel like we've done it, but it's like, they're producing something that says we're not in the future, cuz it's clearly a different code section. That's all I'm saying, like.
I, I feel like, I don't, I don't know for certain, they. Different groups may have different perspectives on how we approach policies writ large. Uh, in this case, our CAC team, which is, uh, an, an, a body appointed by the board. To give feedback on things related specifically to special education, has weighed in and felt like the lines ten and eleven. Meet their threshold for support. The policy committee felt similarly, um. If there are other community entities that might have a difference of opinion, they're certainly able to to bring those forward. I don't think it's that we're not entertaining the suggestion. I think it's our responsibility as the school division to put forward language that is legally sufficient and meets our needs as a division. And and understand that sometimes there are differences of opinion.
Sure. And I, I guess that's still an answer to my question, which is, how do we involve the stakeholder group to get to a point where they feel a part of this conversation? That's what I'm saying, like, and so.
Go ahead, Mrs. Donner.
I, I think it's one of, um, but, so. When I think about the different stakeholder groups that are within our community, I think is, is Dr. Kiefer saying is right. There's lots of different stakeholders that have different positions. And so they come to public comment, they might share information. I think as a, as a board, and I think about who is helping us shape our policy. Right, CAC is a, is parents who are, right, have children in the division. There are, um, board member on there, there are, um, teachers, like, I think. To me, that is representative of the division and the, the population that we are. Making policy for. And so I think, at least for me, when I was, when we had this discussion in the policy. Co- committee, you know, we talked about what we did here during public comment. We kinda dissected what we understood to be their set of concerns. I think we talked about the fact that. Um, you know, that was talking about a special population that we wanna make sure that we're being very careful with how we, you know. Address particularly, I think it was the special ed population around, making sure that we are, um. If we have to get into a situation where we do have to restrain, um, one of those students that we're doing it in a way that is appropriate. And getting the, the, um, CAC's kind of buy-in on that. And so from a policy perspective. If CAC is comfortable with what we've put forward, because those are the parents of the students that we are trying to care for. And our attorney has said this also meets the legal liability. I think that to me is pulling in. And and we considered what we heard in public comment as well. I think we have triangulated those different inputs to get to a place. At least from a policy perspective, I felt comfortable.
Also, also, if I can add to that, one of the things we touched on in policy was that while, while we might in, in. First reading of this, be picturing a very certain, um, population that we serve in our schools, policy covers everybody. And there are different, different scenarios in which physical restraint might be necessary and it might not involve special needs at all. Um, and so at a, at a high level policy, um, position, we, we have to consider many different. Uh, scenarios where a physical restraint, you know, is unnecessarily necessary.
If, if I could just ask Dr. Brown to provide his insight as well.
Sure, I think in addition to the policy discussion, there is a required component within our regulations that there is notification to the parent the day of. Um, whenever restraining or seclusion does happen, the second incident of restraining or seclusion within that school year requires a meeting. And so for a student with a disability that has an IEP or five oh four, it warrants a meeting within ten days. Same thing for a general education student. So there's, as students are maybe subject to physical restraining or seclusion, there's a notification. But in terms of working with stakeholders, we do work with individual families as well, working through what occurred and ways to mitigate that from occurring in the future.
Um, Mrs. Donner?
Just the one thing I would add just for the viewing public, is when you do look at the data sources, again, there's like the policies at a high level. If you go to JM dash R, which is the regulation, that is twelve pages and it spells out much more. Much more detail what, uh, Dr. Brown was sharing. And I think that might help the public get a better sense. Of the two pieces and how they work together.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Mr. Hosang, do you have a question?
I just have one quick, I guess, clarification. Uh, did you say this was, um, Virginia Law twenty dash seven fifty dash five?
Virginia Code twenty-seven fifty-five is the language of the fact that it applies to all students and school personnel?
I, I, I'm trying, at the legal references part, that's blocked off or or scratched off. So are we still referring to that section or not?
If you'll look at, I, I think if you look at lines forty-six, forty-seven and forty-eight, it's, it's still there. Virginia Code twenty-seven fifty-five. Meaning five zero, uh, it, I believe it is still the same code provision. Maybe I'm looking at the wrong thing.
I'm, I'm looking at line forty-three.
Sure, so I. Believe it's in, I, I wanna check and be sure, but I believe it's inclusive of. And and not, it's, it's not, we're not intending to exclude. I believe that those numbers listed in forty-six, forty-seven and forty-eight are inclusive of that which was line forty-three and forty-four. If that makes sense. I'll confirm.
Cuz, cuz usually, wh- when they have the, the legal sections like this, they will go point five, point six. All the way up to point fifty, point fifty-one. I just wanna make sure that, that. What we need, uh, for the provision.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang. Are there any other questions or comments about this? Ready to move on?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Kiefer. Alright, and so we are, we are, um. Just to make sure everyone is clear, we're, the proposed agenda items from section six and the policies from eight will appear on a consent agenda. It's week. Is that good? Make sure that's clear. Um. Okay, then we are moving on to our solitary action item tonight, uh, nine point zero one, approval of personnel actions. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move to approve personnel actions as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Henley.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Ms. Eller, when you're ready.
Mrs. Henley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Alright, we'll now move on to, uh, item ten, board member comments. Tonight, I would like to start with, um. Dr. Cavazos, if that's okay.
Yes, very much so. Thank you very much. I did attend, um, a meeting this past month. And I was, um, overwhelmed by the career and technical education, uh, group people. Um, they really seem dedicated to what, um, their, their agenda, their, their goals. And I think that's really where. Uh, a lot of effort should be put in the future because not everybody can go to college and college is getting very expensive. And this seems to be a very solid program. There's, there's, there was a lot of participation. I was glad to see the encouragement, enthusiasm.
That, is that? Thank you, Dr. Cavazos. Ms. Chen, move on to you.
Um, I'll just make a quick comment. Um, before spring break, um, Mrs. Ordigo and I had the opportunity. To, um, go to Laurel Lane Elementary School and we, um, participated in. Oh, we just observed, uh, a, a great idea that, um, a collaboration between, um. Lafayette High School's International Club and the students at Laurel Lane Elementary School. So, um, I can confidently say that elementary school students love having high school students come and read to them. Probably more so than anybody else. So I thought it was a fantastic idea and, um. We both felt very privileged to be able to participate. So we just wanna thank the International Club at Lafayette High School. As well as, um, the principal and staff and students at Laurel Lane Elementary School and Lafayette High School.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Mr. Riffle?
Thank you. Um, I hope everyone enjoyed their spring break, um, and the pollen. Today was great to go to Matoka with, uh, Madam Cher and that was awesome to kinda see the facilities and go to kind of old stopping grounds. I still have the top there, get them out. So that was pretty fun. Um, tomorrow I'm going to Laurel, I know, Claver Baker with, uh, Ms. Huntley. So that's gonna be cool. Lots of pictures you'll see from Ms. Huntley. Um, and then on Thursday, I have my tickets already for the Jamestown Mary Poppins. Um, you know, they're the theater production, so I'm very excited to go and sit front row. But it's gonna be, it's gonna be pretty cool. And I think, uh, it's, it is that season, so it's, you know, get your tickets and and participate, board members. It's gonna be super cool. And our students really appreciate us being there. Um, and then a little bit of a general assembly update. I just think it's like part of my brand now, so I have to do it. Um, so yesterday, um, August eight, or April eighth, sorry, the governor finished his constitutional obligation to act on all legislation. That was passed by the General Assembly, so that was a thousand, um, and forty-six bills. Um, he signed seven, seven hundred and seventy-seven of those. He vetoed a record-setting one hundred and fifty-three of those. And then he amended another record-setting one hundred and sixteen. Uh, of those amended in HB thirty, which is the budget bill. Um, included two hundred and thirty amendments to that individual bill itself, so that's pretty intense. Um, I didn't read all of it yet, I'm sorry. But from my understanding, they haven't really touched much of the stuff that we are trying to deal with, which is, um, same with three percent raises for our employees, so. Which is kinda nice, so hopefully, you know, less is more, you know, like, we heard it's not too bad from a briefing I had this morning, but, um, we'll see how it goes, but, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Mr. Hosang?
Yes. Uh, I guess, uh, prior to next week's meeting, I believe that parents and teachers and the public should know. Or at least hear from me, uh, regarding what transpired at our, at our last meeting. Um, I had provided a response to, uh, news outlets, uh, that they may or may not have seen. So I just wanna make sure that the public knows what, um, I guess, my response. Uh, to what took place. Um, so I'm just gonna, uh, read what, uh, what I provided. And the first part's gonna be kind of, uh, uh, weird because there's, there's quotes to it, so I'll just have to say. Um, I'll do my best in, in providing it, but that is a racist trope. That was from a board member. Uh, from a Facebook post by a board member that stated spreading misinformation, fear and targeting ELL, ELL students. From the administration and a missive, the, the next day to all Williamsburg James City County school employees, implying that my comments. Were of a racist nature and were unwelcoming in reference to the incoming non-English speaking students. These remarks are a prime example of the age-old clarion call of playing the race card. To dodge, distract, divide and muzzle discussion on a topic that surely impacts our parents. Te- taxpayers, teachers and students. Don't look at the impactful topic that I brought up at the meeting. Look over here at the supposed racist trope. Take your eyes off the topic and look over here at the supposed shiny racist comments. I made zero racist comments directly or by implication. With the budget for the Williamsburg James City County School under discussion, I and the taxpayers of this district have the right to know. The fiscal impact of the issues I raised, including the influx of students whom I am told have poor to no English speaking skills. It makes no difference if these incoming students spoke Chinese, Russian or Pig Latin. If they had little to no English skills to communicate with their teachers, common sense dictates that this would present problems for the incoming. Non-English speaking students, for the teachers to deliver a solid educational experience for them. And for the current students who are being neglected due to the teachers attempting to instruct the new students. Common sense also dictates that to aid the incoming students, monies are going to be needed to bridge the language or multiple language gaps. Do we hire translators? Do we hire more bilingual speakers, speaking teachers in all academic disciplines to meet the needs of students? That at least for a while are going to struggle because of the language gap. At present, will the language need, needs of the incoming students detract from the time our teachers have to spend? With our present student body. These are the questions that I wanted answered and need to be answered instead of derision and name calling. Erupted by a board member. Waive that race card so discussion comes to a screeching halt. Why can't a civil discussion on this topic take place? I was told that it should have been brought up in a closed session board meeting and not aired at a public meeting. Why? The parents and taxpayers of this district are not to be trusted to have rational discussions and support rational decisions? One of the reasons I was elected to this WJCC School Board was my belief that we should have more transparency. And that the light of day needed to be brought into board decision-making. My constituents voted me into office in large measure. Just for that reason. I realize some personnel items for legal reasons need to be discussed in private board meetings. But this topic is not one of them. I was democratically elected. Democracy sometimes gets messy with contrasting opinions and ideas. But democracy does not work well behind closed doors. There, these are budgetary issues. The taxpayers and parents should be made aware of and allowed to offer input. Items of a budgetary nature should not be kept shrouded in secrecy behind closed doors. A board member's rant about racist trope, a board member's false accusations on Facebook. And the administration's disingenuous missive to employees of the district that I implied, that implied. I made racist, unwelcoming comments apparently were made because they take the elitist view that the board. And administration are better able to rationally deal with these topics than the public. Their verbal firestorm of trying to divert attention away from open public discussion of extremely important budgetary and educational issues. In my opinion, reflects their fear of public input. The items I have discussed are, are important for all the students. Both the present student body and the incoming non-English speaking students. Also to the teachers who must instruct all students and the budget to fund the needs of all students, both now and in the future. I stand by my comments made during the previous school board meeting and my vote to not approve a budget. Where we did not have all the necessary requested information. This school system needs more open discussion on issues and less divisive responses. If we are to properly educate our children and move our school system back to the prominence it once enjoyed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang. Mrs. Henley?
Okay, so we're in April. Thank God for April. I thought we were all going up in the rapture with the, yesterday with, with the. Moon and the sun doing their thing. But, um, it was March Madness for my, um, calendar. It was exciting. Um, we started off with James River had a March Madness basketball game. Their staff played the fire department. Now, they only lost by two points, and I think that is because. Coach Washington, she was dressed like Coach Mulkey in her shiny stuff. She had her, of course, her teachers come to work that day and then they had to play. I think the fire department had off that week. I could, cuz they have off some days and then they work some days. I really thought they would give the teachers a break, but it was a battle. But the cutest thing, they had cheerleaders. I think the K through three were cheerleaders. They had the, the fifth grade chorus singing the National Anthem. The band was there, the fifth grade band doing We Will Rock You. That's the only tune I really understood that one. And, um, standing room only, and it was just, it was so much fun, um, to see families just come and celebrate. Then I went to see Annie at James Blair, and I tell you, that was phenomenal. I'm not gonna steal this Ordigo's thunder, but we gotta get those babies some good mics because I think there was two mics that they shared. And all of them could sing, but you know, you couldn't really hear everyone. And the funniest thing was, I thought actually one student, I thought. And the funniest thing was, I thought actually one student, I thought was a teacher, it's like, oh, she's using teachers too. Well, it wasn't, it was a student. She was tall, but her brother was very, very short and it just reminded me that some sixth, sixth graders are like yay tall and then you have some eighth graders that are really, but anyway, it was really, that was so much fun. And then I moved to Lafayette High School, had fine arts and just like what Ms. Chen was talking about, I'm not sure which school they um collaborated with, but it was an elementary school where the children wrote letters to the high schoolers of what their favorite plush toy looked like and then the high schoolers made it into a ceramic for them. That was cool. So then we moved to um DJ Montague, um, and let's see, DJ. Who was I with at DJ? Oh, yes, how could I forget? Mr. Riffle and I, Ms. Riffle, and I had our pajamas on and our little, little plush toys and we went and um, because it was their pajama day and you know, I'm down with anything that's fun. And so, we went and the one thing with him talking about WHRO and I'm gonna tie this in, we went into Ms. Walker's room and she had her students, fifth graders, working on a science book that they're gonna publish. And um I just happened to look over at one girl's work and she was doing a whole report on the, the phases of the moon and Mr. Riffle happened to have mentioned to them that they need to submit some of those writings to WHR so our kids can win some awards. So, I'm hoping Ms. Walker will take him up on that. And then um went to Operations. That's the happiest place to work in our school division, I believe, of all the, so, Mr. Snipes, I want to get him on the docket for school spotlights this summer or something because there is so much rich history in Operations, from the first school to future schools we're gonna have, from pictures of, of the first buses. They even had a, a group of students that trained to be bus drivers. I don't know if I wanna do that, but but it was just so much rich, rich history. We were thrown in the bus, but I'm not gonna steal Ms. Donner's thunder, so I'm gonna stop right there and let her just, she was like a kid in a candy shop. There, so that's another thing. Then um JBB, we found out where bus tires go when they die. They don't go to, they go to a phys ed room. It, so, they had taught, the kids, the fourth graders were doing a muscle rotation, a circuit. And I thought, maybe, Ms. Aller, we can get little cards. We can go there. I can get rid of my gym membership and just join fourth grade because the workout that they did, I don't know if I could do it, but Ms. Donner did flip that, that tire, that bus tire was heavy. So, um, anyway, so that was so much fun and it's just so relevant to see the kids using, you know, well, I'm gonna stop there. All right, and then Stonehouse, I got to read. So, any of us, I think if you love reading to kids, I know Mr. Cavazos, you love, if you just get a moment, you have a time in your schedule um to just, if, call the school and say, you know, I have, got this great book hot off the press and um I'd like to read it. I am sure that they would welcome you to come in and read and the kids love having a, a mystery reader or a guest reader to come in and read. So, that was March Madness, but it was fun. And I know as a school board, we did this bracket thing for March Madness. I found out I forgot to submit my teams, so I never got to get into it, but South Carolina, I did predict them, so they would've won. I don't know how the rest of y'all did, but I had predicted JMU because I bleed purple. I know they really wouldn't win, but I did put them there because I do have hope and I, I know that things can get better and, and miracles can happen. Didn't happen on that end, but I still believe in that. So, those are my reports. Madam Chair?
Well, thank you, Mrs. Hunley. That was quite lengthy, but we know you are, you know, you're a great board member to participate in as many activities as possible. We appreciate you. Mrs. Donner?
Thank you. Uh, just wanna thank our um reports that we had today on both the um our, our special ed as well as our CTE programs. You know, I think what has struck me is the city has gone through the feasibility study and we have looked, it has made us look at our academic achievement and as we have looked at our um continued just disparities with how our special ed population is doing and so you know, in the report, just looking at the disparity of, right, we are responsible for our special ed population, but we get so little money from the state and the federal government for that. And so how much our localities really support those education, the, the education for those students and how we've become a destination for those students because we do such a good job and so our proportions are so much larger, so I just appreciate the um, us having this presentation and as we submit and vote on those next time um to really focus on, you know, what is the point of this board? And this board is to focus on educating all of our children uh for making decisions that that are um bringing in and allowing us to be inclusive and um making sure that all of our children belong. And so, I um just appreciate us focusing on that as what is the true mission of what the board is and really being focused on that today. Uh, I did have that opportunity to go with uh Mrs. Hunley to the Operations Center and I, I love what Mr. Snipes is doing and it's um, Ms. Wall talked about our hidden heroes. You know, the, in the Operations Center, it's not just the bus drivers there. There is, nutrition services is in there, our mechanics are in there and what he is doing from a leadership perspective of elevating the roles and the way that he is creating not only a welcoming space for them to come and be in a place that has dignity and pride and murals and the history and really centering them in, these buildings would not exist without the work of Operations. These buildings would not function without the work of Operations. Our children would not get to school without Operations. We have a large free and reduced lunch population and what nutrition services does is so important. And so, really, you know, I love our teachers, uh, and they are really the stars in our shows, but the behind-the-scenes right, always the, the people that are working the curtains on the back of the show that are, that are doing the audio, that are making the costumes, the things that you don't see, um, that's what our operations team does and I just really appreciate what Mr. Snipes does to uplift them. Uh, and I too will join Mrs. Hunley and potentially, I might give up my Peloton streak, Dr. Cavazos.
Well, come on then.
To go, to go flip, we have a rivalry here about, I'm one week ahead of him on Peloton, um, to go flip tires. I mean, that was one of the best workouts I have ever, I was a little sore after that. Uh, those big tires are a lot heavier than you would think. Um, so just really appreciate J Blaine Blatton and that opportunity. And also on the international conversation was able to go to Matthew Whaley's International Fair. And, oh my goodness, I just learned so much about the different countries and what I love about our school division and, you know, Matthew Whaley I get to see more of is that we have people from all around the world. So, there was a family there from Kazakhstan and they um shared some of their traditional milk that they would uh have, it as being nomads, and so they made that. There was, we had Irish dancing, we had, um, and uh, there was this, something about our, some of our local indigenous populations and Native Americans. Food, food from everywhere. We ate so much. I came home, my husband's like, what's for dinner? I was like, you should've come. Dinner was there. I mean, it was just amazing. And our partners, we had um many of the, about five or six local restaurants that donated ethnic foods for us. And so I think that is just so important. Like, we don't always talk about the partnerships that occur within our community and that our communities really do support us, so it was wonderful. And so I just love us really being able to focus on what is important and it is the division, our children, and really creating a place that uplifts them. So, those are my comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. It sounds like we've all been quite busy, which is, which is wonderful, especially in the springtime. I um, some of the things I've done have been mentioned, so I won't um belabor them, but I, I enjoyed um my visit to Matoka this morning um with Principal Knowles, um, who I had not met yet and just a very cheerful, uplifting environment, very colorful and I love what they're, a lot, a lot of the things that they're doing there and as Ms. Chen said, the um kinda got a twofer with the uh Lafayette High School students at Laurel Lane Elementary and just experiencing their um International Club, which is some international students, but also American students um with, just their learning and appreciation for uh people from other places and different languages and then reading to the children. Um, and I think some of them even read in Spanish, which is great. And, yeah, they were definitely the celebrities. We, school board members, not so much for and I am also looking forward to, um, I did see Annie Junior. I'm looking forward to Mary Poppins this weekend and and I'm really looking forward to an adaptive version of Mary Poppins. I'll report on that next time because I, I I'm really excited to see what that is for um some uh students uh with special needs that will be putting on their own version of Mary Poppins and with Mrs. Hunley, I'm excited about that. Um, and yeah, just sort of along the lines of um what Mrs. Donner concluded with, I just wanna make sure that we refocus on our main purpose and our main goals. Um, I want to highlight again um from, from last meeting, the collaborative process that we went through to approve a budget. Uh, we're a, a, really a brand-new board. We have brand-new members. We have the, the other three of us haven't been here all that long. We are learning together and, and we really worked well together and I wanna highlight that because I think that might have gotten lost in the, in the fray of the last meeting, but um obviously the budget process is not completely over yet and we're, we'll see where we, we land, but um, we did work well together and I, I think um all six of you for that. Um, and yeah, just focusing on the strategic plan bridge that we're starting to see updates on and I know that that's gonna be, I know um staff is working on that and, and we will have input in that and that's where we can sort of cast high-level vision uh for where we as a board think that this division should go. Um, and that's extremely important and, and focusing, like Mrs. Donner said, on student achievement. That's really what we need to be laser-focused on. I know that's what staff is laser-focused on, but as a board, that's, we set the tone at the top and that's needs to be our, our goal and our focus because we wanna provide not just the best experience in school for these kids, but their future. Their, 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 their own future, they are our future and so that is um, that's really what we need to work together. Not, no one can do this alone. We have to work together and that's, that will be our goal moving forward. So, that concludes my comments. Upcoming events. Special Education Advisory Committee will be meeting on uh April eleventh at six thirty PM here in room three hundred of the Annex of the School Board Central Office. Policy Committee on um April nineteenth at eight thirty AM in room two oh three of the um School Board and Central Office. Student Advisory Committee, April twenty-fourth at three PM at Warhol High School Media Center. Career Ready Advisory Committee, also on April twenty-fourth, also at three thirty PM, but it's here in room three hundred of the Annex. And the VSB A Spring Networking Forum, Tidewater Region, uh is on April twenty-fifth at five PM. We are grateful that uh Mrs. Hunley and Mr. Riffle have agreed to represent us at um, at our regional VSB A meeting and, oh, that, well, it takes place at five PM and IC Norcom High School, uh London Boulevard, Portsmouth, Virginia. And I believe you'll be bringing artwork to showcase, right? So, we're, we're excited to um hear the update in May from them on um how that went and what, what our artwork looked like and sounds really exciting. Upcoming meetings. Closed session uh on, next Tuesday, four sixteen at six PM. We'll begin uh here in room three hundred at the Annex, followed by work session and action items, also same date, four sixteen at six thirty PM in James Blair Middle School Gymnasium. And then the next meeting is, closed session will begin on May seventh um at three forty-five PM here in room three hundred, followed oh, I believe this is switched. Next meeting on four sixteen is our regular meeting at six thirty PM in James Blair Middle School Gymnasium. On May seventh, we have a closed session followed by a work session, um, which begins at four thirty PM here in room three hundred. So, hope that's clear. Um, and with that, we have set our agenda items for next week for our regular meeting. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.